Everyone's so quiet. Okay, welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 That was excellent participation on the pledge.
(inaudible)
I just want to know, yesterday we had a wonderful Memorial Day event in the park out front, and it was warm, but we had some shade, so that was very nice, and I want to thank all the staff that worked so hard to make that event possible, and all the folks that came to speak and participated in it. It was really lovely. We have a few proclamations and one recognition on our agenda. The first is the recognition of our neighborhood hero, and Vijay Kapoor is going to present that. And anyone who is here on this item, please come forward, and I see the famous Shiloh t-shirts, so I know you want to come forward.
(inaudible)
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 ...bill being passed allowing all the states to grow industrial hemp. And I'd like to read that to you. It says, "I pledge allegiance to the hemp fields of America and to the soil in which it is planted, one seed under the sun with responsibility, sustainability, and thriveability for all."
Hi, my name is Lori Bura. I own a medicinal herb farm in Canler, and I just wanted to let you know that I was the first nationally certified organic hemp in North Carolina. And nationally, I was the first nationally certified hemp from Oregon Tilt, which is one of the largest certifiers. I work with local growers to encourage biodynamic and organic growing of hemp.
This concludes the proclamation and recognition portion of our agenda. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding any items on the consent agenda? No? Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Excuse me. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to adopt the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are going to move into presentations and reports. I will say, if there's anybody in overflow, we now have several seats available up here in the chamber, so if anybody, go ahead and make your way up here, there should be room. The first is a report from the airport, state of the airport, and the director, Lou Bliweis, is here, I saw him somewhere, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Appreciate your time this evening to give my annual report on where we stand for the airport. From an air service perspective, you all have already been presented with the electronic version of our annual report. The annual report basically is fairly focusing around our staff and what we try and do for the community. From an air service perspective, we had six carriers last year: Allegiant, American, Delta, Elite, Spirit, and United. Legion had 41% of the market share, American 22, Delta 22%, Elite at 1%, Spirit at 8%, and United at 6%. We had Spirit in the fall of 2018. The cities we served last year were Newark, LaGuardia, Chicago, Charlotte, Atlanta, Baltimore, Fort Lauderdale, Sanford, Orlando, Orlando, St. Pete, Tampa, Vera Beach, Denver, and Punta Gorda. And then, of course, announced and started last month was Philadelphia, Dallas, Detroit, Washington, Dulles, and Sarasota. From a passenger perspective, we had 1,134,568 passengers last year, it was up 19%. From a seat perspective, we had 692,851, which was up 18%. Largest increase from any of the carriers was Allegiant at 43%. From an airline operation, the airlines operated 19,370 operations, which was up 2.9%. And general aviation and military was down 11.8% for a total of 41,928. Asheville was named second fastest-growing small hub airport in the country by Bloomberg News. From a construction standpoint, we continue with Phase IV of our runway project. We constructed a new aircraft parking apron to expand nightly parking. We completed a terminal assessment study, which looked at our new water and sewer systems. And then, we're starting planning for the terminal, which is, right now, the terminal is assessed at 113,000 square feet. With the number of passengers we have, we should be at 225,000 square feet. From a community standpoint, we supported, again, Wings for Autism for the third year. We did the Blue Ridge Honor Flights, United Way Day of Impact, Passenger Appreciation, we had six events. Two most noted ones was Bojangles coming down on our baggage belt for arriving passengers, and we had an ice cream sundae social. We had pause for passengers continued with an event in February for Valentine's Day, which was Kisses with Pooches, which actually got national recognition across the country. We continue with artwork in the terminal. We recognize Western North Carolina Magazine images of Western North Carolina photo contests, and we also highlight student artwork throughout the community. We continue Music on the Fly, an award-winning program through Airport Industry, and of course, we sponsored North Carolina Apple Festival, Flat Rock Playhouse, and we also did various others, to name a few. From a financial standpoint, the airport operating income for 2018 was $12.4 million. Expense was at $8.2 million, giving us $4.2 million to our fund balance. From an asset standpoint, for the year-end, we're at $139 million. That was an increase over 2017 by $10.1 million. From an economic impact standpoint, the airport contributed almost $1.5 billion in economic impact to Western North Carolina. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
And Lou, just for clarity, and you do this every year, you bring us this report. In Asheville, some cities, the airport is actually a department of the city, but not so in Asheville.
That's correct.
The airport is now an independent entity, but we have still sort of a remaining relationship in the sense that you bring us this report, and I believe we receive your budget every year.
Do that, and of course...
And sign on the debt.
And, well, the city also has two appointments to our board.
That's correct, right.
So you do have the commitment to the airport with some input.
Right, along with the county, Buncombe County and Henderson County.
That is correct. Asheville City has two, Buncombe County has two, Henderson County has two appointments, and no six, picking that large seventh appointment from either Buncombe or Henderson County.
But from a financial standpoint, we're independent of one another, the city and the airport, so...
Absolutely, we have no impact from you all, and neither do you from us, so we get no city taxpayer money from the city of Asheville. We are self-sustaining and have been since 1979, I believe. And we do have the liaison with Councilman Kupur, so we do still have that communication line between us and you all.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, thanks for making the trip.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
The next item under presentations is Asheville City Schools Foundation In Real Life After-School Program, and I have here that Tiffany DeBello, if I'm saying that right, I'm probably not saying that right, and Brian Randall, and it looks like you have more than that, so please introduce your guests to us.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and the community at large. My name is Tiffany DeBello, and I'm here with my colleague, Brian Randall, and of course Xavier Banks and Anna Murray. And we're here to discuss just our strategic partnership fund and to give you an update. We do have a presentation. If you would just give us one second. Thank you for your patience.
Now we're going to see the whole thing already.
Okay, so the IRL, well, IRL is an acronym for In Real Life, and it's a program of the Asheville City Schools Foundation. And it is my pleasure and honor to be able to give you an update pertaining to our partnership that we've held for many, many years, and we also want to say thank you upfront. So the outcomes of this presentation at first is to just give you some historical context of IRL and just tell you a story. We also want to look at the numbers, does after-school work? And also, we want to highlight our collaborations. In order to have a strong force that works with youth, you want to collaborate with strong individuals and organizations. And lastly, just in their own voices, students and some providers sharing their story. So just a little bit about IRL, we have five core values, and those are fun, love, safety, growth, and collaboration. When students are having fun, they feel loved, and when they feel loved, they feel safe. And when they feel safe, they're able to collaborate, and not just to their peers, but also with other adults. And this just breeds growth, and so that's why IRL is so much fun. But let's talk about the network. What is the In Real Life After-School Network? Well, it was a decision that was decided by the city of Asheville, along with Asheville City Schools, communities, families, and of course, the foundation. And we looked that in the summer, middle school students didn't have anything to do after school. And in 2008, there was a shooting with middle school students that left one child paralyzed. And so, a listening project was created. This was a citywide action that started from the former mayor, Terry Bellamy. It was a collaborative effort that took, of course, again, the city, the foundation, the school district, and of course, the community at large. IRL was created from us, working together. In the fall of 2010, we enrolled 144 students at Asheville Middle School. We believe that in order to work with youth, you have to think about some of the plights and things that take place in our society, which is the achievement gap. But when I think of the achievement gap, I think about access and opportunity. In IRL, students have access and opportunities to after-school programs. They're able to do things that they may have never would have the opportunity and chance They have 10-plus options to choose from, so it's not just a one base station for after school, but we're working and collaborating with many organizations throughout the city. And of course, we're looking at some of our enrichment programs, but I cannot stress how much we do look to academics, our tutoring program, and even one-on-one mentorship. But students can pick a class that they want in any given day. But now, let's look at the numbers. Is IRL inclusive, and are we providing diverse programs? Well, if you look at the pie graph, and I invite you to just kind of look at those numbers, we see here in total, 53% students of color are enrolled in after-school for this year currently. We look directly at our black children, that's at 28% compared to the white pairs. So again, there's 53% of non-white students enrolled in IRL. 47 of our total enrollment received free or reduced lunch. But what about our parents? So we look to our parents because their voices were the voices that rang back in 2010, 2009. Parents needed access, they needed affordability, and they needed transportation. And so, we have a one-stop shop for our parents in IRL, and that is, they can use an online portal to sign up, they can fill out a form, they can call it in, or they can go to the school. And of course, IRL has expanded from Asheville Middle to now include Monford, North Star Academy, so we're serving both Asheville City Middle Schools and the district. Providing the transportation home and to off-site programs really was a game changer for many families. And if you look there, 48% of our families live in public housing, and they rely on the IRL transportation.
We actually changed that a little bit, so originally, it was 40% of students of color enrolled in our program used that. It's actually much closer to 90% of families in public housing rely on IRL transportation, so I dropped a ball, switched that number.
Okay, thank you. And so, what does that look like? Well, it's because of your investment. These are the results that we were able to attain. We were able to remove the barriers to high-quality programs so that all children, but especially those most impacted by racism, can become a part of something without the need of pay and/or the need of compensation. We decreased the opportunity gap and connected students to our city's organizations and industries. For example, our students work with Thermo Fisher Scientific, they're building cranes, and they're including mathematics in that. But then also, on a smaller level, they're working with Asheville on bikes. So some of these students, even before graduating high school, can obtain some type of youth leadership position and even get paid through some of our local organizations and partnerships. We're also able to keep children safe while enhancing social, emotional, and academic outcomes. And most of all, and this is my favorite piece, is that through your investment, we are able to recruit and retain providers of color to work with all youth. Now, let's just look at the numbers, and I invite you to just take a look rather than I just kind of read down verbatim, but for this year, 229 students attended IRL for the 2018-19 school year. 184 of those students demonstrated social-emotional growth based on our social-emotional evaluation scale. Over 75% of those students participating in academic-based courses demonstrated growth. Now, these courses are not our cooking classes, they're not our bike clubs, but they are our tutoring. They are the classes that are ran through certified teachers from Asheville Middle and Asheville High. So we have a heavy focus on academics, but we also want to make sure that there's a piece of fun in there so that we can retain students to continue to show up. 44% of students of color are enrolled in Student School Day Support Services. Now, what this looks like is we have adults, and they push into the classroom during the school day to become a one-on-one mentor with our most impacted students that have challenging moments during the day. So they're there to give them academic support with teachers, but they're also there to be a soundboard and a bass in that classroom with teachers as well. 25 service providers of color ran individual classes for this school year, and 20 of them received a stipend. And so, it is because of your investment, we're able to pull in individuals from a local community level that look like the children that we serve. So not only are our children of color see people that looks like them, but then even our white students are able to see black leaders that are in the school building. But, you know, in order to do anything successfully, things have to be cost-effective and sustainable. 60% of our families attend IRL for free. And if you look at it, on the top, IRL operating costs are $1,000 per student. Now, that is annually, per student. On the national level, or average, is $3,000-plus annually per student in after-school care. And so, being cost-effective, we're able to reduce the childcare burden for working families. Parents can go to work and know that their children are safe after school. We're also able to have great partnerships with the school district, and this partnership reduces overhead and transportation costs, which allows IRL to be sustainable. But of course, it is you, the city of Asheville's investment. This investment increases our training opportunities, it leverages community resources, and it stipends our providers of color, something that we would not be able to do if it wasn't for your support. And I would like to open it up to our young people for a small piece of just...
Hi, I'm Anna. I'm a little nervous, but I'm glad to be here. I attended IRL in middle school, however, I'm now a high schooler at Salsa. I came back as a youth mentor because I wanted to be able to help young people like me learn and grow. I love the fact that IRL has community partners. When I was in IRL, I was able to do many different amazing clubs that IRL provided. One of my favorites was Delta House. In Delta House, we told a story of our world through the paintings that we were able to create. Delta House was not only a space where we created art, but it was a safe space where we formed a community by helping each other learn. I feel like a major part of IRL's success has been the fact that we are able to work with the community partners. IRL is shaped by the people in it, and it's because of their support and dedication that so many kids have been able to grow in social and emotional aspects.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Xavier. I'm in middle school, I'm in 7th grade, and I'm 13 years old. School for me, it's stressful, and it doesn't come to me as easy as it comes to a lot of people. It's struggling, and it's not the funnest of things, but I have to go through it. But when I come to IRL, it helps me, it gets my mind off of it, it makes me feel that I can show my true colors, because in school, I feel like I can't do that. But in IRL, they help me with homework, and if I need help with anything, they can try as best as they can to help me. And I really appreciate that from the IRL staff. And one of the programs that I was in, as Tiffany said earlier, was Thermo Fisher Steam, which when we builded cranes, and we had to go off of, we had to learn the basics before we could start actually building, and so it made us learn teamwork through having a basis to go off of, and it helped us where we can all work as a team, and we're not all over the place. And it, and we... We had a competition, and it was like where we had teamwork, and also where we had good sportsmanship, so it teaches us sportsmanship, teamwork, and a lot of other skills that some people might not have. And with the competition, when the winning team won, it wasn't like braggy, it was good job, you did your best, and it was real helpful. And in the end result, it helped me learn that I can work with people, but they might not be the people I want to work with, but I'm going to have to get used to it.
Well, so you have to learn that lesson.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one final item under presentations and reports, and that is the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a new item that is being added to the agenda. It's one that may not happen, may not recur every meeting, but I appreciate council allowing staff and our meeting to update the community on some initiatives that we have underway. You may recall that we did something similar, an update on Memorial Stadium, and now we're going to have an update by Ken Putnam on the Charlotte Street Road Diet, and I promise the next item that we present will not be as controversial. I'm going to stop that routine of having controversial issues as part of my update. So at this time, I will turn it over to Ken and allow him to present. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. My name is Ken Putnam, I'm the Transportation Department Director, and tonight, I want to give an update on the Charlotte Street Project to give you the progress report. First, a little bit of background, as you know, back in April 2018, City Council authorized the city manager to direct staff to move forward with the Charlotte Street improvements, which included a road diet and also spot safety improvements. And then, in November 2018, City Council approved the consultant that was going to do the design contract for the road diet and the safety improvements. Project goals for this project is to implement and create a complete streets environment for all road users to be able to experience, and then also, the second one is to improve the safety for all the road users. First thing that we did, we had a public meeting in February 2019, and the structure of this meeting was two parts. There was a morning session, and then an afternoon session. At both sessions, we had right around 174 attendees, and the purpose of this meeting was to gather input from all of the public, to get their suggestions, to get their concerns, to listen to them, to answer questions. So the format was, there was no prepared speech or presentation, but it was free-flowing. As people came in, they were assigned to different staff members that were there that could take the comments and answer any and all questions. These comments are available on our website, but just a couple of them, what we heard loud and clear was, as far as pedestrian mobility, 36% of the people that attended were very concerned about pedestrian activity on the Charlotte Street corridor, and also 26% were concerned and interested in the vehicle mobility. After that, that information was all taken back by the consultant. That consultant then compiled every one of the comments, and as they designed the corridor plan, they also started taking into consideration all those comments, comments from staff, comments from NCDOT. Internally, we had many meetings and discussions with all of these stakeholder groups. And then, at the second public meeting, it was the same format, it was held in May 2019. There was a morning session and also an afternoon session. And the main purpose here was to present what has been designed, and then just to get comments and suggestions at that meeting. At this meeting, 50 attendees came and had many questions. This is the plan that was presented to them, and it basically shows the road diet that essentially stretches from Chestnut Street all the way up to Edwin Place. What's important about this plan is that it not only includes a road diet, but there's pedestrian improvements with additional crosswalks, additional refuge aisles that we don't even have at this point in time, and bicycle improvements would be the bike lanes and then bike boxes, which are used to enable a bicycle to position themselves at an intersection to be able to make a left turn more safely. We're using high-visibility crosswalks every time you cross Charlotte Street, and that's will definitely help to enhance that pedestrian safety experience. During that plan, we also had an optional survey that folks could take to give us feedback. 23 of the 50 participants took part in this survey, and we were asking various questions on a scale of 1 to 10, 1 being not good, 10 being very good, what they thought. And overall, the questions that are highlighted in yellow, the first question there was, "How supportive are you of this corridor plan?", and that scored a 7.9, or close to 8. And then, we asked follow-up questions about, given the constraints on the project, how well does the design address your pedestrian mobility concerns? That one scored almost a 7. The same thing with bicycle mobility, that one scored an 8. And then transit mobility, that one scored a 6, 6.35, and then vehicle mobility, that scored a 6.9. So everyone that participated felt good with the overall plan that has been presented, and these participants included business owners, property owners, residents, nearby residents, just interested citizens, and even developers. The next steps, we've just about completed in May. The final plans will be completed in June. There'll be continued conversations with individual property owners, especially the ones that will need to be talked to about some right-of-way adjustments, especially when we try to make the sidewalk ADA accessible by solving the problem with power poles that happen to be in the middle of them, and so we may need some help from the property owners there. The bid process will take place in July and August of 2019, and assuming that everything comes in well, that we get interest from the contracting world, also that their prices come into what we would like them to come into. The project is scheduled to be constructed this fall. It'll take 60 to 90 days to complete the project. So if all goes well, we should be completed before the end of the calendar year. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor, if I could, Ken, if you could just talk briefly about an assessment process, we are looking at kind of testing day... kind of testing data and, and ensuring that the road is operating in the manner that uh achieves the goals that were set out for the, the projects. If, Mayor, if you could allow me to respond to that, I appreciate it.
Sure, I'd be glad to. And, and this is something that uh came out from some of the citizens that attended the, the second public meeting is how, how are you going to measure the success? How are we going to know if this really works or not? And so we're already beginning uh to develop a process for that. We're, we're going to renegotiate the scope of work with the consultant. And that consultant has agreed to do an assessment for, during the first year. We have to determine, do we want an initial assessment, say at six months, and then a second one at 12 months? Or should it be three months and nine months? We'll work out all those details. But some of the things that we will measure is, we will want to measure how well this project is doing in bringing down the overall travel speed. We know that we have a speed limit of 25 miles per hour. Uh, we also have before data that demonstrates that, that most people are driving faster than that. So one of the things that we will be able to measure is, is how well are we doing that? Are we reducing that overall travel speed? And so that will be done at both those uh levels or those periods in time. Another one would be, uh, we've heard concerns about congestion, how far that the queues will back up at certain intersections. Uh, that one, we will be able to go back in and get hard data as far as traffic counts at various intersections. We will also be able to get traffic counts uh along sections of the road that we could compare to the before data to see, first of all, is the traffic that's used in the facility, is it the same? Is it gone down? Is it going up? And that'll help us to determine how effective this is, or are we shifting a lot more traffic to other facilities? Uh, the other thing that we will be able to do is, because most of the data that's collected now is done with video cameras. So we will be able to also analyze at certain key locations, how far is the traffic backing up from an intersection? One thing that we do not want to happen is for traffic to back up all the way to one intersection and go through that intersection because that's what creates the temporary gridlock situations. Then, at the end of that assessment, the city staff can determine, okay, this is what we've got and, and so forth. Then, now, should we do it every year? So at the end of the second year, should we do it again, the third year, that sort of thing? And with uh your, your help, we will come up with that solution as well. And then we'll be able to make adjustments because the things that we are putting into place are, are things that can be relatively easily undone or tweaked to make them operate better.
All right, does that conclude?
That is, that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, okay, we're gonna turn to the public hearings agenda. Um, but first, on the public hearings agenda, item C, I need a motion to continue item C, which is the One South Tunnel Road Project, um, to July 23rd. Do I have a motion to continue item C?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion and a second. Anyone wishing to comment on the motion to continue item C to July 23rd? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, I didn't get your second to that.
Okay, the first um item under the public hearings agenda is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2019-2020 operating budget. And the city manager will begin.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna make a, just a couple of comments to provide just an overview before we hear uh the public comments. Uh, I'm gonna try to cover the items that you see, the development and adoption schedule, the principles, the proposed budget. I will spend a little bit of time on two of the issues that we've heard a lot, uh, in terms of emails and all kinds of correspondence about two, two items that I've spent a little bit of time on, talk about the capital budget, next steps. But more importantly, we want to uh receive a public um comment. I'd also want to just take a little time to thank staff again uh for the work that they put into the development of, of this budget. Mainly, Budget and Finance Department, as well as all the other department heads, their staff, the community. And last but certainly not least, of council for the amount of time that you all um spent uh with us deliberating and developing these uh recommendations. The process overview, we started, um, I wasn't here then, but you all started uh in August. Uh, we are now at the May 28th, uh, public comment, a public hearing. And then, uh, final adoption is, is due on June the 11th. I would also note that there have been numerous opportunities uh for city, for elected officials, uh, the community uh to um, uh, have input, as I said earlier. In terms of the guiding principles for this budget, we really wanted to have a framework and an, and an overview uh or lens by which we would uh make our recommendations. And the three uh guiding principles are essential service delivery, enhancing customer value, and strategic alignment. And all of those are related to council's uh priorities. But um, but more importantly, again, we wanted to make sure under essential service delivery that the departments had um the resources that they needed in order to meet uh service expectations. And enhancing customer value, um, efficient service delivery as much as possible to improve the um customer experience. And then, as I said, aligning resources with not only council's uh priorities, but also what we've heard from the community and staff goals. So the proposed budget essentially is kind of a base budget. It continues funding for existing services, um, minor enhancements. Uh, it maintains the property tax rate. Um, there, there is no property tax increase that's being recommended. And that the total proposed budget is $190.3 million. And I'm gonna um just quickly go into some of the major operating investments. And again, I'm not going to go over the entire budget. Um, it is online at ashvillenc.gov. Um, but we'll focus pretty much on two items that we've heard a lot about. Our total investments in, in transit. You can see that we are from what is being recommended, which I think is um an increase of $1.56 million over the previous uh budget or what we have currently in the budget for transit investments. It will increase 20,000 service hours, uh, adding those routes that are um color-coded. A purple, green, and yellow options and, including the white option, which is in on here. Staffing, I think there are six uh new staff that are being added. Bus maintenance to improve reliability, and then a, a maintenance facility study, as well as continuing um support from a consultant that has been hired to work with us in the vendor. Wanted to put this, this chart in because I think that we have heard a lot about fully funding the first year of the Transit Master Plan. What you see is just a trend in terms of transit investments. Um, our 2020 estimated um investment, again, is an increase of $1.56 million, which represents about a 30% increase over what um has been budgeted for this year. It would give me no greater pleasure than to be able to fund the first year implementation from the Transit Master Plan. Um, however, there is a significant um, uh, issue of the amount of revenue that we have. Um, the additional needs that we have in the community. And then lastly, the challenges of, of implementing for the, the full year. Um, that is, uh, we have challenges with just having enough buses to actually meet an extension of, of service hours more than what we um have already recommended. We have an issue of if we extend or expand service hours, we have to have an equal extension in terms of paratransit services. Uh, we don't know how much that would actually cost at, at this point. So um, we have um some other, other challenges. But mostly, what I would like to leave you with in terms of the transit increase is that um we are making, and I think that you all are committed to making incremental increases in transit. And I know everyone wants this to happen faster. I wish we could. I see it happening faster, hopefully, if we get additional revenue or different type of re, revenue to, to fund these services. Investments in people. Uh, we've heard um a proposal that was discussed in, in great detail um at the last budget uh discussion. It was our, the actual presentation of the manager's budget uh with regards to increasing pay. Um, but this is what we have recommended so far. An employee pay raise of 2.5%, which would be a cross-the-board increase. Uh, additional retirement contribution, I think that's required by, by the state. One significant thing, and I think uh we heard this from Councilmember Kapoor, that we are managing healthcare in a way that there is no additional healthcare contribution that is being made um by our employees, and we're extremely proud of that. The class and compensation study is so needed because it will provide us with the information that we need to make some good decisions about employee pay and their classification and ensuring that we are paying them for what um they are um in, in the private or in the, a public market. Uh, we're paying them for what they uh should be paid. So there was a, a discussion about a $15 per hour uh rate for all employees. And how would we go about addressing it? Uh, what I'm asking council is to direct staff uh to study this as part of the compensation and class study that I just talked about. Um, and rather than a $15 an hour, that we talk about a annual salary of $31,200, which is equivalent to $15 an hour. But based on a 40-hour uh work week. And this would apply to all permanent, full-time, permanent, uh, part-time, and temporary seasonal employees. If, given that direction, staff will then direct whoever the consultant is that will be doing the classification and compensation study. The first phase, the first thing that they will do is to provide us with recommendations and costs for implementing um this $31,200 annual uh salary adjustment, uh, as well as address some of the salary compression issues that we talked about um at the, at the last meeting. And this, I will, with the help of finance and budget, will identify funding within this year's budget uh to begin implementing uh based on uh the study's recommendation. That's kind of operating, just highlights again of those two major issues. And also for uh the capital investment um program budget, construction of Fire Station 13. And I know that um we've heard a couple of times, we need to get a new name for that, uh, and, and we'll be working on that. Uh, funding for facility maintenance, a computer uh replacement, and Wal, Walton Street Pool and, and Grant Center investments. Um, our next step is, as I said earlier, a budget adoption on June the 11th. And uh planning for future years, um, set this at the closing of uh, of, of the presentation at the last meeting. Want to continue to improve and innovate operations. We want to look, define to call, come at what we do and how we do it, and see if there are any efficiencies that we are not taking advantage of. We want to review our strategic partnerships process to ensure that there are significant and strong linkages between your priorities, the community's priorities, uh, and our partners' ability to um collaborate and implement. Want to continue community outreach and engagement efforts to ensure that we are working with the community and that they are knowledgeable about this budget process. Uh, strengthen the link between priorities and, and budgets, because I sincerely feel um we need to uh ensure that we are advancing council and the community's priorities. Uh, and then evaluate capital funding options. I think I have made it um, or not made it a secret. I think I've done this with the bullhorn, that I think that we need to have a much more regular process of investing in um our infrastructure. We have significant uh funding obstacles, uh, doing it without going into a little bit of debt. Uh, and so with that, I will conclude and um turn it over to the public for public comments unless there are any questions.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for addressing the, sort of the two issues that we've been getting a lot of emails about. I think, you know, I think everybody up here would want to pay everybody as much as we can pay them. And I think everybody up here wants to expand transit as fast and as much as we can. Sadly, in both of those situations, there are very real limitations that don't necessarily allow us to do that. I'm happy to put back on the table the idea of a property tax increase, which is the only option available to us at this point to increase our revenue and cover some of those costs. But um, but that uh went over like a lead balloon last time. So um, I will not renew that suggestion. But it, I just, again, I mean, I think it's important to make the point that we, people want a lot of things. We've gotten a lot of emails in the last two weeks from people wanting a lot of things that cost a lot of money. And I, for one, have not, no one has come to me with a suggestion for where we might find that money by trimming in the, in the, in the current budget. And part of the reason that we did that whole um exposé of the budget last fall with very detailed um presentations and information, all of which is still on the city's website, was to open that process up and, and really uh invite people who, who wanted us to spend our money differently to make those suggestions. And, and I think sadly, no one has made those suggestions about how we might shift money around. So we have what we have. We're gonna expand where we can expand and, and try to do better next year, which I think we will be able to. So thank you.
Gwen and I were just taking a quick look over here at the budget on transit. And if you add in the federal funding and the
That's correct.
um, motor vehicle licenses, it's over $10 million in this year's.
Yeah, and, and the figure that
And that's an increase of a million five, about, no, maybe a million six, um, from what we're spending in the current year. So I'm, I'm, we are making a pretty significant additional investment um in 1920.
And, and I appreciate you all adding in the other source of funding for transit. What I talked about was just from the general fund and the parking, uh, the funding that we get.
You might mention that you have been able to, um, through your connections, bring in a consultant to help us renegotiate some of the terms of our contract to get more bang for our buck.
Absolutely.
Basically what it looks like, is you've been able to get more services for our dollars, and that, that's been very effective.
Thank you, Mayor, for, for adding that. Um, we feel like that we are creating and building a true transit system. We're, we're, we're on our way. I know that people want more, but I want, I want our transit system to run efficiently. I want it to have the kind of impact that everybody wants in this community in terms of being on time. But it's going to take us time to build the technical expertise that's needed in our organization to ensure that our vendors are, are, are meeting their obligations, that they're delivering the services that we expect from the contractual arrangement. And we, we just need a little bit more time, and obviously, we need more resources to do that.
And just to put another little plug in here, um, also, our federal funding is going down.
Absolutely.
And will continue to go down the next couple of years that we already know about. Through the fact that uh some of, we're through the fact that some of, we're sharing a little bit more with our neighboring municipalities and counties, but also that the monies at the federal and state level are not increasing to the extent that we'd like them to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I continue to think that what we need for transit is a dedicated source of funding. There's really only one way to get that, and that is what's authorized right now through the legislature is a sales tax. That's only available to counties. It's not available to cities. There was a bill that could have made that available to cities this year that I don't think made it out of committee. So, you know, this is, this is an uphill battle for us, but we are, we are in conversations with our legislators about that. We are trying to fight that fight, but it is, it is not, it is not an easy one, but we need to keep fighting it.
Absolutely.
Backing up to the compensation part of your presentation, just wanted, for logistics, you mentioned that you need a direction from council. Do you want that? Were you looking for that here tonight, or was that going to be included? Or how did you want to partake in that?
I think it probably should come when you
Vote on that.
do your adoption, which is June 11th, or you can do it now, whichever you prefer.
So the proposal would be to embed the policy in the budget document of adopting a goal of $15. And I say a goal, because you're, what you've laid out is this compensation study with recommendations. So we can put it in the budget document and vote on it at our next meeting as a part of the budget.
And then just one more thing to clarify. I believe I also heard you say that, once the study was completed or whatever, that you would look for dollars in this cycle, in this cycle that we're going into to implement that.
To implement as much as we can
Okay.
of the recommendations.
We tried to nail down a timeline, but it's a little bit elusive right now because of the need to do the compensation study first.
So what I envision is having a consultant onboard if this budget is adopted by maybe August or September. And then this will be the first phase of their study and analysis. So by December or January, we will have the results. We will come back, have communications with you all in terms of the fiscal impact, as well as other impacts, organizational impacts.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council before we open up the public hearing?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, folks, we had a whole bunch of people sign up to speak and clearly wanted to speak on the budget, so I'm going to call these in order. You'll Yeah, I'm going to tell you all the
When I arrived, I asked if I should sign one of those.
Not required. It is, it's, it's not required.
You're still good.
Just, yeah, this is, every year when we do the budget, people sign these. Anyway, we get a little discombobulated. But everyone is going to get an opportunity. No one will be left out. It just means you might be waiting until I get through all the signups. So I'm going to take the signups in order that I've got them, and then if you didn't sign up, I'll just call you and you'll raise your hand. If you would please state your name, just especially in case I botch it up. And you'll have three minutes to speak. Watch the lights on the lectern. Green means go, orange means you're getting close to the end, and red in the buzzer means stop. And aside from the adorable children that spoke earlier tonight, we always have to have you stop at the red light. And there are several people in here who I can see are trying to waive their time for someone else to speak for 10 minutes. So that's fine, too. If you have three people that will waive their time to you, you can speak for up to 10 minutes, and those other people that waive their time will not speak on the budget. But I think I, I think I covered it all. So we'll begin. The first person I have signed up to speak is Sheila Saret. Oh, and no clapping. Do, if you really want to show your support, do like a little, like this, thumbs up, or if you don't like it, you know, thumbs down. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Saret, downtown Asheville resident, more like Chicago. What is going on with the crime in Asheville? Open your eyes. Stop funding soccer fields over and over and over in flood zones. It's laughable. Put that money into hiring more police officers to patrol downtown Asheville in high-crime areas, especially late at night. You all refuse to give benefits for our Asheville firefighters, so they took it to Raleigh. Bill's passed in the House, waiting for a vote for the Senate. Got to go to Raleigh to get something done, like I did when I went to Raleigh to make sure Asheville City Council will become Districts 2020, which will hold you all accountable. Start treating our first responders with respect. We need a police chief. I don't feel safe downtown. Please give Asheville firefighters benefits they well deserve. Start listening to we, the people, not choose the people, because we, the people, will vote you out in 2020. Thank you, first responders. Thursday night was a busy, awful night. Thank you.
The next person I have signed up to speak is Amber Banks. That does not look like Amber Banks.
No, it doesn't. There you go.
There we are.
We're speaking together. We have folks sitting on, I think. Some are in the hall.
Oh, is there anybody in the hall who wants to speak on the budget? Do we, if any, if you've got a seat next to you that's open, will you raise your hand? We have anybody with a seat? Ooh, it's a full house. We have one seat. Okay. If you're waiving your time, Maggie, I guess, can we somehow figure out? But you've got people downstairs. Sorry. Okay, can we just do it on your honor? Why don't, yeah, just go ahead and do that. There you go, there's one. Anybody else? There's another one. These are people giving up their time to speak on the budget.
Carmen Ibera, who's in overflow.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a third one.
All right. 10 minutes, Maggie. Amber, come to this microphone so people who are watching can hear you.
I'm Amber Banks.
And I'm Amy Cantrell. And we're here to say transit can't wait. And so, so we want to tell you, I want to say that we've come time and time again to say there is money in the budget, and there are things that we need to look at addressing and deciding whether we need to move money in the budget. It's what I do in my personal budget. If I don't have enough money for the things that are absolutely necessary, I begin to look at the things I can, I can move around so that we can make, make room for the things that we absolutely need. And so we know transit can't wait, because transit opens up access and opportunities for our folks economically, and it also is good for the climate. And we know that the climate and the people can't wait. And so I want to say that I've spent a lot of time at the bus station in the past week, and I've seen workers in their uniforms going to Burger King and the Grove Park Inn and Delta at the airport, who spoke tonight. And all these folks said the same thing to me. Transit can't wait. They are dying, trying to make things work, trying to survive, and they don't have enough money, and they're spending money trying to just get home from their jobs. And so we want, we want you to hear from them.
So Amber. And I really don't have much to say. I think that all of our stories are represented here, just from everyone who wanted to write down a bit of what they go through themselves, so.
So we, we collected postcards. I'm going to give all these to y'all at the end, and we have over 100 here. Let me just say, we also had 42 community leaders that signed an open letter and article that we wrote for the Asheville Blade. And so between 42 community leaders and also 100 folks that shared their stories, we want to share some of those tonight, and we'll give you the rest at the end.
Dear City Council, please continue to prioritize transit and support the extension of hours. Later buses would help me. I frequent local business and support local artists and the music and comedy scenes. It also would enable workers to find more employment and opportunities. And it's from Tracy Wold, who is a Asheville resident, worker, and with Better Buses Together.
I'd appreciate being able to take the bus later so I can get home from work safely and I can find more dependable work. Eden Jelso.
Make the buses run later, please.
I am a pet sitter, and I book gigs all over town. The fact that service only runs down some routes at night and ends long before dark on Sunday harms my ability to earn an income in Asheville, let alone find time to have a social life. Transit helps our environment. Transit is important to me. I hope it is to you also. Matilda Bliss.
I work 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM in a nursing home, and I spend $23 a night to get home since buses don't run that late. It would be nice to have late buses. Michael.
Later bus would help people that work late hours. Buses could help improve family values also.
The Transit Master Plan was designed with input from directly affected communities and grassroots communities. It is essential that it be funded and implemented as designed. Mick Collins.
Later and more frequent stops would allow me to take the bus more often. It would also allow me to use
An alternative.
An alternative to my car.
It would help a lot if the buses run at least until midnight, because I work late. Two jobs. And also, I need buses that are reliable, because I use them to pick up my kids, taking them to and from school and doctor's appointments. Thanks. Fred Gossit.
Two of these are very similar, saying, help me shop and get home after work. Later buses would help me to get to the grocery store late at night.
I need it, please. I walk a mile from work, because I get off at 10:30 PM. JB.
I am in recovery, and later buses would allow me to access more AA and NA meetings.
I wouldn't have to walk two to three miles home from work every night. I would also be able to take night classes at AB Tech. Julie Johnson.
Being able to work night shifts in other neighborhoods, seeing my friends.
The Black Mountain Bus, if it ran more and ran later, it would help me get to work on time. Bus 170. Marquesha Johnson.
By extending the hours, I can volunteer at Mission Hospital at a later time. There's more availability to serve others.
Late buses would help me with transportation to and from work. Buses after 8:00 PM, please help. Eric R.
I think E2 should run after 7:00. That's the bus I ride, and I think, I think even 8:00 would be good.
I have no car, of course, as it would help with transportation to and from jobs that are working later than 8:00. Some jobs go until way, way late at night. It's almost impossible to continue to save and work late-night job and eat and keep a home. It would be much appreciated.
It would help me enjoy my time after work, be able to go to meetings, and see entertainment.
Late bus service will help to make sure I keep my job, also to ensure that after work, I have transportation home. Max McCann.
It would help me to enjoy my life, continue visiting friends, and help me to go to AA meetings.
I always need to get places that the bus is no longer running that late. Lily Rayn.
I work third. We need late-night routes.
To get to places after the bus route is over at night without walking. Fred.
It would be great to go places at night. It would help me access food and not get stranded at night.
I get off at work at 10:00 PM, sometimes 11:00 PM, and extended hours would help me get home, because I live so far from where I work. Earl Loudon Jr.
I get off, I get off work at 2:00 AM, and I'm losing money paying for taxis.
A later bus on Sunday would help, so I didn't have to rely on my mom to take me home from work. Crystal.
It will help us, because we can't afford a car. Not everyone can afford taxi fare. So if N1 went longer at night for work issues on Saturday night, it's so hard to plan stuff like getting home and getting food. Angela.
For individuals who work second or third shift and need to get back home or do errands after that, later routes would be super.
Later buses would help me for work issues. I miss too much work, and it's hard to get home on weekend nights. Also, it would help me attending AA and NA meetings. April.
From Bobby, my job requires late hours, and I have no car. Can we please have later bus rides?
Later buses would help me hold down a job further than a block from home, and it would help me not carry my groceries four miles to my house. A North Asheville resident.
Especially to and from the airport in South Asheville. It's a tourist city. You want to be a big dog, act like one.
I personally would be extremely grateful for a bus ride home when I have to work later hours, and I know many friends that also struggle with the same problems, as well as getting home safely.
If going to AB Tech night classes don't, don't get out until 9:00 PM, hard to get home.
I need it to run longer. I stay in Black Mountain, and it stops at 8:00 PM. MS.
Allow me to reach my destination for work purposes. I'm unable to do for, for a work schedule.
Going, going later at work. Going later at work.
Okay. Going later at work.
Later buses would help me get home from community meetings. Also, more frequent and on-time service would be a benefit to my chronic health issues. My child and I sat in the heat for 45 minutes waiting on the bus the other day. I'm not supposed to get overheated or be in the sun like that. Sabrina Rembert. As you can see, these are the voices of the real people for whom this is a real struggle, so we'll hand you the rest of these, if that's all right. Thanks for letting us speak, and thanks for your work.
The next person signed up to speak is Catherine Walsh, and there's a number of people that have indicated they want to waive their time. I think one of them is Karen McNeil. Is Karen here?
I'm here.
All right, well, let's see how this goes, then. Bob Reimer, okay? And Allison Ormsby, if I'm saying that right? Is Allison here?
It could be down on one.
Could be down on one, okay. Kristin Anderson. Are you waiving your time?
Yes.
And standing in support?
Yes.
That's all right? Okay, and Michael Justice, maybe down on one? We don't know yet. And Cynthia Justice, I'm guessing is with Michael. Okay, so I'll just hold on to these and try to figure this out. This is where it gets a little nightmarish with paperwork, but go ahead.
Okay. I'm Kathy Walsh. I am a member of the Tree Protection Task Force. I'm on the board for Elijah Mitchell Audubon Society. I'm a clinical psychologist, and I'm also Blue Ridge Certified Naturalist. I'm here to ask the council to consider funding in the 2019-2020 budget year, the Urban Forest Master Plan and the Urban Forester. In March of this year, I called and left messages or spoke with each of you, asking you to consider funding this position and this plan. And I'm asking again. Asheville City Comprehensive Plan calls for the creation of an Urban Forest Master Plan that promotes biodiversity and forestry best practices. Where is this plan? That was in 2018. Again, from the Comprehensive Plan, so, and I'm quoting, "So as we face the problems implied by the phrase 'sustainable growth,' we must continuously ask ourselves how to maintain Asheville's natural surroundings, or we risk destroying the very things that brought so many of us here in the first place," end quote. Yet, when I review the proposed budget for 2019-20, there is no reference to trees or the urban forest. Research reveals that those cities that have adopted an urban forest master plan, such as Charlotte, have increased the size and health of their urban forest. Asheville, as reported by the gap analysis that was reported to you in February 2018, has lost 8% to 10% of their tree canopy. That's 1,600 acres of trees that have been lost. That's 1,600 acres of trees that have been lost in the past 10 years. We have no plans to replace this at this point. Hiring, when I look at the budget, the budget indicates that there are many new hirings in place. Not one, not one of these positions are charged to deal with the urban forest. Zero dollars are allocated in park and rec for trees. Zero dollars in public works. Yet they're adding four new positions to address streets and tree trimming, but no tree planting, no tree assessment or protection. Unlike many other cities in the southeast, we do not have ordinances or agents charged with protecting our trees and our urban forest. Stormwater. $660,000 has been requested to replace stormwater infrastructure and asset management. Are not our trees the real assets? Our stormwater infrastructure? What funds are put aside to address their care? Office of Sustainability. They suggest adding a position of a sustainability coordinator to, quote, "provide technical support to reduce the city's carbon footprint." Our trees are already doing this job and yet the forest is still underserved. Quote, "Asheville is recognized as a Tree City USA. It embodies an urban forest." End quote. But it has no urban forester to plan for it, to manage it or to increase this canopy. The urban forest is a major component in the fight against climate change. Trees sequester carbon. They absorb stormwater runoff. They reduce heat. They reduce noise. They improve the mental health of those fortunate enough to have trees in their community. How much longer will we ignore this asset and neglect its maintenance? If, there could be an enormous cost to the city and to its citizens and wildlife if we lose the urban forest and canopy? In terms of extreme heat and the impact... Where does this go up?
It'll, it'll come up.
It's there?
It'd come in.
Okay, thank you. This comes from Cities Management and it shows that many of our citizens are at great risk for heat. In the days that we've had this week, it is clear that we are not well-prepared to take care of those residents who live in parts of this city, most of who are lower-income residents, who do not have the trees to help them have the cooling effect that trees provide for us. We have urban islands of heat in those areas that are indicated on this map. I would also point out to you that in September 2016, The Mountain Express had an article asking for an update of the Asheville Tree Ordinances. This is not a new problem. This is not a new request. Again, the Asheville Comprehensive Plan states that climate resilience is one of its most urgent priorities. How is this manifested in this 2019-2020 budget? The plan also states that, quote, "Saving trees is the most effective state that we can, step we can take to address this priority." End quote. How is this being done? On 2000, page 2004 of the plan, it states the desire to, quote, "encourage naturalized stormwater management techniques." We have those already. They're called trees. On page 209 of the Comprehensive Plan, a great detail is devoted to what an Urban Forest Master Plan would do. Why not move forward with this? During just one year, one 12-inch diameter oak tree intercepts more than 1,000 gallons of stormwater runoff and pulls more than 600 pounds of carbon out of the atmosphere. I ask that you seriously reconsider this position and fund it. There's money there. You have funded, there is money there to fund 25 new positions. Clearly, some of that could be shifted around to fund somebody who could take care of this asset that we most seriously need. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Karen, Michael, did you... McNeil, sorry. Did you want to speak as well? Okay, you're under the three-minute part.
So I'm also here to speak as a concerned citizen in favor of implementing an Urban Forest Master Plan. I came to Asheville in 1991 to go to college and fell in love with the lush landscape, the laid-back people and the beautiful mountains we all call home. I'm raising two daughters here, have been a homeowner in Asheville for the last 15 years and work as a registered nurse in long-term care and hospice. In the nearly 30 years I've lived here, clearly there have been a lot of changes. I love this town, so I'm really doing my best to adjust. Of most concern to me is the clearing of our urban trees to accommodate for the rapid growth of our now very popular city. In the last few months, I've been attending meetings pertaining to how we can best protect the ecological integrity of our hometown. I've listened in on the Tree Commission, the Tree Task Force and volunteered with Greenworks Treasured Trees. I've learned we have lost an estimated 8% of our tree canopy in the last 10 years. I'm worried if this continues unchecked, it will have a hugely damaging effect on the health of our community. I've also spoken with an urban forester from another comparably sized city, Fayetteville, Arkansas. Fayetteville has a slightly smaller population than Asheville, yet they have two urban foresters. They initiated the Urban Forest Plan 20 years ago when they hired their first urban forester and in the last few years with the support from their city have hired a second urban forester. I've been very surprised to learn that as nature-friendly as Asheville claims to be, we do not employ even one urban forester, nor have we adopted an Urban Forestry Master Plan. It's my understanding that Asheville's tree ordinance, last revised by City Council in 1997, does call for the creation of a master street tree plan as the responsibility of the Parks and Recreation Director. It's also my understanding that city staff in the last 22 years since that revision and mandate have not yet requested any money to fulfill this mandate. Aside from the aesthetic beauty, a healthy urban tree canopy will help provide cleaner air, cleaner water, enhanced property values, lower utility costs and improved well-being for Asheville community. It's a relatively small investment for an astronomical return. I'm here to ask City Council to consider this matter of protecting our tree canopy and our urban forest an urgent priority, to not wait any longer and to dedicate the funding requested by the Tree Commission for an Urban Forester, an Urban Forest Master Plan in this year's budget. Thank you.
Okay, and I had Allison Ormsby, who indicated she wanted to waive her time, so maybe... Okay. And then Michael Justice and Cynthia Justice also signed up, but both indicated they wanted to waive their time. Are they here? Anybody? Okay. The next person I have signed up to speak wants, a couple of people want to waive their time, to Dawn Chavez. That is Cassidy Martin. And Susan, whose last name's hard to read, but it starts with an S. Okay, so Susan is here and Cassidy is here. And we need one more, maybe?
Okay, you got it.
I got another, okay. Thank you. All right, Dawn, you've got three.
Hi, I'm Dawn Chavez, the Executive Director of Asheville Greenworks and a City of Asheville resident. Just want to echo everything that Kathy so eloquently said about the urban forest and the lack of funding to support the requests for an urban forester and an Urban Forest Master Plan. City of Asheville citizens have come out in strong support of this, as evidenced by the survey that was included in the proposed budget, where environmental protection and sustainability came out as the second highest priority, yet there is no funding to support any implementation. Councilwoman Mayfield, earlier you said that we're all asking for things, lots of things, and not proposing any funding ideas of how to get the money for this. I'd like to counter that by saying, as the Executive Director of a nonprofit who has its main mission, a part of its main mission, the protection of trees, has supported the city for 46 years in its tree goals and has at times been the only advocate for trees in the city. And I raise $150,000 each year to support our tree work. So I think I do find funding from other sources. Yet in the city budget, there's not a single dime. In our contract that Greenworks has with the city to support our efforts as part of a strategic partnership, we get $30,000 a year to support our work through the Office of Sustainability. And there is no money in that budget, that $30,000, which is a small fraction of our $500,000 budget, to support our tree work. So our Treasured Trees program, our tree workshops, our Neighborhood Treekeeper program, our education and outreach, planting trees, taking care of trees, all of that is funded through private donations, grants and other contributions. Urban forest management has a synergistic effect and can help simultaneously to reach several of the city's council's strategic priorities. Asheville can become a livable, walkable, sustainable, vibrant city, but only with an Urban Forest Management Plan that is thoughtful, collaborative and funded. The Tree Commission has made recommendations and it seems to have fallen on deaf ears with the response that there's just no funding this year. We can't afford to wait. We are losing tree canopy every day with the rate of development in our city. And a sapling does not replace a 200-year-old tree and its benefits. So I urge you to strongly, I strongly urge you to reconsider and find at least partial funding for an urban forester in this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Claire Hanrahan, signed up to speak.
Good to see you all. I'm here for the trees. I'm here for the bees. I'm here for the transit. And I'm really happy we have an urban garden right downtown. Asheville Edibles Program has supported that and through the Office of Sustainability, we've got a lot of bees and butterflies and people coming together. But we call ourselves Tree City, but the trees are falling. Far too many of our beneficial, noble and ancient trees are being cut. They're being cut for Duke's power lines, for voracious hotel construction, for parking lots and road expansion to accommodate these carbon-emitting automobiles. Far too many of our beneficial, noble and venerable trees, they're cut with little to no buyer leave. No ritual to honor these beneficial beings. That statistic of 1,600 acres of trees lost in just 10 years, listen to that. I've lived here nearly 30 years. I've been car-free all this time as a pedestrian, a bicyclist and a transit rider. The streets and sidewalks are hot. They're congested. They're congested with polluting cars and the blacktop heat is just astounding. In the building where I live, low-income senior housing in a lovely old building, the air conditioning's out on my floor. My apartment was 85 degrees for the past three days. The windows open three inches. It'd be nice to go out and find a nice, big, widespread urban tree to sit under. It's the shade and the coolness of our remnant urban trees that provide for our walkers and our bus riders a little bit of relief from this heat. I'm glad to see you honored, Phyllis Stiles and B-City USA. I went with her and others to Atlanta to the Climate Reality Training. We are in dire need of a city budget that recognizes the reality and the impact of climate change. The threat is real. It's imminent and sadly, our collective denial is strong. How can we wait? How can we not fund the Transit Master Plan? How can we not preserve our remaining urban trees? How can we call ourselves Tree City? How can we come, become a livable, walkable city that meets the needs of all our citizens? I ask you all, how can we wait? We cannot wait. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have signed up to, the next person I have signed up to speak is Diane Allen. You'll, you'll have to tell me, maybe I need, do I need to start saying names in case they're downstairs on one? After Diane Allen is Andrew Kirby, just in case anyone's downstairs, they can make their way up here.
I have three to see their time. Tammy Haney.
Tammy, yes?
Carrie Placico.
Carrie. Carrie, raise your hand.
Downstairs.
Okay.
And Amanda Schraft.
Who is that person? Amanda?
Amanda and Carrie are still downstairs. Okay. First off, I want to thank each and every one for your hard work and for listening to all of us tonight. My name is Diane Allen. I am President for Amalgamated Transit Union Local 128. City Council, the union feels the pain of daily struggles for our riders. As drivers and maintenance employees, we all struggle on a daily basis to meet the needs to serve our city. The current routes and failing buses has been a system of failure for many years, even after the implementation of the 2011-2012 Transit Master Plan, which that consultation started in 2009. The union spoke then and said the routes were being set up to fail everyone. I remember myself and others sitting with our other union president then, sitting with city staff, consulting firm and management company at the time, First Transit, and committee members telling them, "This isn't going to work." This being the new Asheville redefines transit, from the point forward, no matter what we said, the TMP took place. Since then, we've tried tweaking, rearranging, adding, removing stops, all this, just to fill in the broken pieces of a broken transit. The new transit that has been in the headlines so many times of people being left behind, buses breaking down, buses catching on fire, no AC, no heat, no driver to drive a bus, no bus for a driver, and the list goes on and continues to grow, just as our city keeps growing. As a rider suffer from day to day, so we do care. And we need to put safety first. Just the most recent incident, we had a driver, with her experience with the brake and steering, was able to stop her bus in the side of a bridge, the Jeff Bowen Bridge. With her experience, she was able to stop that bus without incident. Not a passenger one was injured and nobody on the road was injured. She is our transit hero. Employees get fed up too. Making excuses, sugarcoating the problem, getting cussed out, getting threatened, getting all the complaints while we sit in the driver's seat trying to remain calm and not get stressed out and strive to drive safely as possible, as we get angry too. We get upset with the daily struggles our people go through. Believe it or not, Council, we care about our transit family. The family we see more than our own and the families that expect a safe and timely bus ride from home to childcare, work, appointments and then home safe again. They depend on us for their daily lives, as some drive leisurely in their own cars and that's a choice. Our current transit family don't have that choice, it's a necessity to say the least. Dear Mayor and Councilmen and Councilwomen, we ask you to elect this budget forward to the next step for the TMP budget. Put our people first. Let's get more out of our cars and into transit. Let's draw them to want to ride and conserve to help with the climate change. Before we can do that, we must fix what's broken. Help contribute to every effort to improve the transportation in our city. Every day there's new visitors becoming residents. That brings more congested traffic, which is also a major factor with our current transit system, on-time performance. Also one of the major factors of frustrated drivers and drivers. We just cannot keep these buses on time. We either got traffic or we're getting broke down. Let's fix what's broken. Push this budget through sooner than later. We just can't get anywhere. Be part of change. Better buses together and stand with us. Be part of change, better buses together, and stand with us and say, "Transit can't wait." Put safety first. I'm going to read this on behalf of Tammy Haney. She's our union's financial secretary, she's also a bus operator. She's here to support the riders in Transit Master Plan and Transit Can't Wait campaign. Tammy states, "We all know that this is most needed for our people, trying to their best in the world and change in their lives. For one, support the effort, but I am here to ask for your, all your support as well for us, the employees, the drivers, garage staff, and dispatchers, as well as you. Keep us all safe while riding our buses. I have been outraged that the idea that no one takes more action about weapons policy. Everyone wants to talk about dirty bathrooms, dirty shelters, but our safety, where's that on the list? Sometimes it seems to be allowed to yell, spit, threaten, just want only a 30-day suspension. But we're told they're allowed to do this, why? Why do we have a security guard? That's a waste of money. The guards are no able to do nothing because there are no policies in place to go by to enforce. Why do we have all these supervisors when they're at the garage and not on deck to help us? If they're the only ones to suspend people besides officers, why are they not at the transit center all the time? Right? So why is weapons policy a city property? I'm also wondering why we're all parked on Ashland during this construction, no bathrooms, no one to help the people find their buses on deck, and no security? And how do you feel about no AC? Now, why is it so hard to get funding to fix buses because lots of people on hot bus, an incident waiting to happen? Everyone all wants new routes, and we support that. But please, support the safety of your drivers. Buses are in awful condition. We see a change with our new maintenance director here now, but he don't have a magic wand. And we need two dispatchers, at least at that office for transit supervisors. Police stay in their cars, so they don't need an office. Security should stay on the platform. As for the cutaway vans, the leased vans, are they leased? Who owns them? They are in poor shape and are only getting worse with no funds. Who is responsible to fix them? Are we keeping them? So many questions and so many concerns. I could be here all night, but I won't. Let's just say this right here, transit can't wait, and neither can we. Protect us, push this budget through for everyone, for all the improvements for transit that we all may benefit from what I say, oh, I mean our riders, our taxpaying citizens, and the employees. Support this budget and push for transit. Transit cannot wait.
Thank you. Okay, so in addition to our no clapping rule, we also have a rule against signs. So if you could make sure not to put your signs up, that would be great, thanks. I know, it's such a bummer. My next person signed up to speak is Andrew Kirby. And the person on deck is Ashley McDermott. About process?
Yes.
Okay, we have a question about process?
We were told we didn't have to sign up.
You don't, we?
So can we sign up now to get in line, so people that have come in after the people that were here early?
So I, so I have, so the question is about, can people sign up now? Maggie, are there still sign-up sheets out there?
There's still sheets, but.
But once I get through the sign-up sheets, I just start calling names. I'm not receiving any additional sign-up sheets, just the ones that people already use to sign up. So Mr. Bach, you're on the sign-up sheet.
I am.
I have yours, yes.
After the hearing?
I, we're doing the budget hearing right now, and I have you as a, well, yours was kind of budget-related, so I figured I'd call you.
You can walk your head downstairs or you can rest after the budget hearing.
Right. Okay, we'll do a better job of this next time to clarify, because we normally only use these forms for the public comment period at the end of the council meeting, but tonight, we did it this way because we have people, I don't know why we do this. But Maggie's been doing this for 37 years, so I defer to her and how to do this. So I'll just move through these sign-up sheets. And when I get done, if you'll just raise your hand, and we'll have to do some kind of shuffling because we've got people down in the first floor. And I don't know how many people we have on the first floor, anybody?
A dozen.
A dozen, you're saying a dozen? Okay, you're starting to rotate, okay, terrific. All right, I do see, thank you if you're making space for other people to move up, I appreciate that.
We couldn't get up in the sun. We could not get up here in order to sign in.
That's okay.
If you're downstairs, you can get up if I want you to.
Okay.
So what is the solution?
Okay, all right, I, I do have you signed up to speak, and I am going to call on you. But they are bringing people up now, so I appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Kirby, we are to you.
I have to push a button?
No, you don't.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll just talk about budget and funding shortfalls, et cetera. Maybe it's time to do some mergers, jokingly, really. But first of all, the police and firefighters, we need to help them however they need it. They need proper funding and regulation to do their jobs. And they should not be encouraged to avoid areas just because they're touristy, that's not right. If that, I don't know if that really happens, that's just a rumor I've heard, but if that does really happen, I'm very disappointed to hear that, I hope it's not true. But the main point of that is they should get the funding they needed, both police and firefighters. All right, second. Your claims department gave me a very hard time today. And I intend to, not only in this case, but in other cases, prove that there are many improperly engineered roads in this city, and which you have changed fairly recently, that it is becoming a condition of the direct opposite of intent. Your intent is safety and multifaceted transportation. But, but you will find your plans result in the opposite because you have skipped so many steps. I honestly hate to say it, but Ken, as well as your traffic engineer, either have no idea what they are doing, or they are just doing what they are being told to do. Regardless of evidence of safety or efficiency, I truly believe that you are imagining something that is never going to happen because people are accustomed to their ways of life. You cannot force change to that. And I know for a fact that you're, that you're making massive mistakes in a, in a growing city. What we need instead is to make actual vehicle road improvements and separate the, the other goals from the necessary ones, even if just via a tree line, shrubbery, and grass. Okay? You will not stop growth, and to neglect or reduce improvements is irresponsible. This can be done with much lower expense than the method, the methods that this city is choosing. Third.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's, so we'll, Maggie's suggestion. We'll change it up here a little bit. I've got nine more people that signed up to speak. But if you're in the room and you also want to speak, but you didn't sign up, I'll do a switch back and forth, so, yes. Oh, you're, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I already called, yes, Ashley, you're, and then Steve will do you, okay. Thank you for reminding me.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ashley McDermott. I'm an Asheville city resident of 11 years, activist and hub coordinator for Sun Mire's Movement Asheville, a youth-led socio-economic climate justice group. Funding a fully equitable, reliable, and accessible public transportation system goes hand-in-hand with meeting renewable energy goals by 2030, as you claim we are transitioning towards as a city. Without enacting the full Transit Master Plan, we are only putting Band-Aids on deep wounds being inflicted on the fabric of the city in the name of development and tourism, and this more of the same mentality is ruining our culture. Simply put, if we want to have an actual conversation about transitioning away from fossil fuels and committing to 100% renewable energy and carbon neutrality by 2030 in a way that's equitable and brings frontline communities to the table, then we need to adequately both fund a proper sustainability budget and the Transit Master Plan. The Transit Master Plan is advised by necessity riders from all walks of life, along with transit planners and city staff. This community input will allow us to successfully prioritize equitable mobility options, one that runs on time and provides hours and routes that will meet our needs. Your insistence that we don't have the budget, while instead allocating pay increases for high-level city staff and a massive increase to an already large police budget in the name of "public safety" is perplexing to me. I would argue that public safety is achieved through affordable housing, fair wages, and accessible public transportation, so that we have a functional local economy that allows working class and marginalized communities to make ends meet. The transportation policies we enact in this budget must work to right systemic injustices we're facing right now in this city. Historically, road construction and pollution have impacted marginalized communities more than wealthier and wider ones, cutting them off from economic opportunities while harming health. Traffic will continue to heighten as new construction is proposed, property is developed, and pressure on the city increases as CVA resources are pumped into Asheville tours and advertising nationwide, crowding our tiny city in the mountains. Costs of housing is skyrocketing, wages are solid, and our urban sprawl reaches further and further outside city limits. As locals contributing to our economy, as well as working the jobs that fuel it, transit is critical to reducing our carbon footprint while also allowing for economic mobility. The budget proposal states that you are "developing initial action steps to address Asheville's 100% renewable energy goal." The desired transition you state is massive and will take a lot of hard work, and we must start that right now, with the full implementation of the Transit Master Plan, if we actually want to get there. We have many uphill battles in the state of North Carolina, but right now, the city of Asheville has the ability to establish the framework we need in order to set us up for success locally. Thank you.
Thank you. And Terrence Major, you're on deck.
Hi, my name's Steve Rosmusson, and I do, oh, I'm with the Tree Protection Task Force, and I do have a specific suggestion for shifting money to pay for a critical city priority in alignment with our strategic goals. As Dawn pointed out, environmental protection and sustainability is the number-two concern on that city survey in the budget. And council did instruct the comprehensive plan authors a few years ago to make climate resilience a high priority, and they did. As we know, and as they confirmed, flooding and landslides due to stormwater runoff increased by climate change are one of the biggest and most expensive and dangerous threats we, right here in Asheville, face from climate change. And sure enough, as I look through the budget, I see that stormwater is the fifth largest item on it. Council approved a 5% increase in stormwater fees that increased the budget by $304,000. However, money from this enterprise fund is designated for repairing and replacing stormwater infrastructure and road-building projects. Why not for tree maintenance and planting to reduce stormwater runoff? Why not put that money toward tree canopy preservation as an aspect of stormwater control? Instead, I see money delegated only to hiring five new guys to replace pipes. This is like paying to replace the Band-Aid, but not to heal the wound. Couldn't that money pay for hiring an urban forester? Stormwater and street trees both fall under the Public Works Department, so why isn't Public Works connecting these dots and advocating for an urban forester? I'm just not seeing much long-range vision here in this budget for addressing climate resiliency. Hiring a new sustainability coordinator is the only step in that direction I really see in it. So we just can't keep postponing action while our single most effective weapon against climate change, which is our tree canopy, is being decimated. We have the state's authorization to stop this tragedy. We have the consultant plan, comprehensive plan consultants' recommendation to stop it from happening. We have the public will to save our trees. We can't afford to keep uttering noble words about climate resiliency while refusing to budget for it. Five new pipe layers aren't going to make up for the increased flooding, heat, carbon pollution, and on and on and on that losing 1% of our tree canopy per year is causing. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrence Major. No, but he was on. Okay, so no, no Terrence Majors, Terrence Major here? There's, no? You're confusing me with the hand raising. You're not, you are Terrence Major, or you are not? Okay, okay. All right, I'm going to pass over Terrence Major, and so tell me who wanted to speak back over here? Okay, this gentleman in the sort of green shirt. The next person signed up to speak after this is someone whose first name is C-O-R-T-H-E? Korth? Roche, Roche? Courtney. Is that person here?
Courtney Roche.
There's no one downstairs on this issue.
You think this is Courtney?
I think it's Courtney.
Okay, we think it's one.
I want to ask that speaker.
Okay, is that, is Ms. Roche here? No? How about Michelle Myers?
I'm here.
Okay, you're on deck, Michelle. All right, yes, sir.
So I believe I have three people ceding their time. I see one, I see two, I see three.
Okay.
Good.
People who have not already ceded their time.
So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Jeff Jones. I'm a resident of the city of Asheville, of East Asheville, and I am a daily bus rider. I'm also a member of the Transit Committee, although this evening I'm speaking only for myself. This evening, I wish to speak about funding for the Transit Master Plan. First, I want to begin with some heartfelt appreciation for City Council. I appreciate your making transit your number-one priority this year. I appreciate the renovation that is currently underway at the downtown art station. I appreciate, what I understood was 1.2 million in additional transit funding in the proposed FY20 budget, crucial to improving on-time performance. I appreciate city staff adding the yellow package that was not originally part of the 1.2 million, but was achieved through negotiation with the transit management company, RATP Dev. There is a lot to be grateful for. I hope the remainder of my comments do not take anything away from the appreciation that I have for what you have done and what you are doing. This evening, while I'm grateful for the partial funding for year one of the Transit Master Plan, I want to make a case for full funding, starting January 1st, 2020. I think it's important to recognize that this is already a six-month delay from the July 1, 2019 start of the TMP, approved by the City Council almost a year ago. So we're already behind. The part of year one of the Transit Master Plan that is not part of the proposed budget is funding for additional evening service and additional Sunday service. And that was funding that would allow buses to run to 10:00 p.m. on weekdays and to 8:00 p.m. on Sundays. This service later into the evening would help, as we've heard so well from the cards that were read, would help second-shift workers and those who would like to spend an evening in Asheville. Everyone would be served by this. I want to share with you what I find to be an awkward irony in the part of the Transit Master Plan that is not part of the FY20 proposed budget. Bus service later in the evening is the very service that would allow bus riders to get home after these city council meetings. I hope that is not lost on you. I personally would ride bus E2 to get home tonight, but the last E2 bus leaves, I don't know what time it is, leaves the transit center at 7:15 in the evening. In addition to tonight's meeting, I would not have been able to get home by bus after two of the last three city council meetings. For that reason, I intend tonight to walk the 3.2 miles to my home at the end of the city council meeting.
All right, folks, come on, quiet down a little bit, just do the.
I know this is a little dramatic, but I do so in solidarity of my fellow bus riders who could not be here this evening. And please keep in mind that I am male and able-bodied. Not all bus riders have the option. Not all bus riders have the option I do to walk home. And today, it may or may not be light when I walk home. Later, bus service would allow bus riders to get home safely when it is dark outside, when it is raining, and when it is cold. Please consider that in your deliberations. If I may, I will remind you that transportation and accessibility are part of the 2036 vision for the city, and yet, these very city council meetings are not accessible to bus riders because of the buses stopped running before most of these meetings end. I've heard a number of reasons of why full funding of the Transit Master Plan is not possible, and I'd like to address two of these. First, I've heard concerns that we may not have enough buses. As I think you know, we are getting seven new buses this year. They're not even in service yet. They're still on their way. Seven new buses. And if this is not adequate, I've seen creative use of shorter buses on routes that have less ridership. We have six months to plan if we need additional shorter buses. I think we can do this. The second concern, and perhaps more important to all of you, is that there is not enough money in the budget for additional bus service. Now, I am a city budget novice, but I would like to point out three things. First, when the Asheville Chief Financial Officer presented at the March 26 Working Sessions on Slide 21, she indicated that the structural gap was thought to be 1.8 million in January of 2019. It was then thought to be 1.4 million in February of 2019, and it was thought to be 1.1 million in March of 2019. With these sizable decreases in the structural gap over just two months, it may be even less today. I hope we will revisit that. It may be a source of funding that you're looking for. Second, on March 26, the CFO also reported that the property and sales tax revenue available from the sale of Mission Hospital would be 2.5 million. This can be found on Slide 22. But at the May 14 meeting just two weeks ago, it was reported that the property and sales tax revenue is now expected to be 3.1 million in 2019, an increase of $600,000. I think we just found $600,000. Finally, many budgets have surpluses at the end of the year, and at the end of FY19, these might provide funds for additional bus evening service. My examples may be flawed. I'm a novice, and I know you don't want me micromanaging your revenue stream. The bottom line is that I believe there is likely untapped revenue that could be used to fully fund year one of the Transit Master Plan if you choose to do so. In summary, I urge you to fully fund year one of the Transit Master Plan starting January 1st, bus service that will provide service later in the evening and additional service on Sunday. And please remember that I will be walking home after the meeting tonight because the last bus for me to take home -- take me home leaves the transit station at 7:15 this evening. More gratitude. Thank you for your time, for your attention, all that you do for putting up with us and our words this evening. Thank you all. Blessings to you.
Thank you. Excellent. Excellent. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Myers.
I just want to be a tough act to follow. I second what he says, and I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Western Renewables Coalition, Western North Carolina Renewables Coalition. We're a group of member organizations, many of whom are also represented with individual spokespersons here today, but many of whom are not. So if you give me a moment, I would just like to read off some of the folks that couldn't be in the room. Citizens Climate Log, the Dogwood Alliance, Renew Asheville, Alliance for Energy Democracy, Indivisible Asheville, NC Warren, Community Roots, the Sierra Club, Transition Asheville, the Creation Care Network, and Mountain True. And there are others, actually. We don't always agree on the exact plan to get there, but we did come together around the 100% renewable energy resolution which you passed last October 23rd. As part of that plan, which we thank you so much for supporting, we were quite insistent that it also include transit. In order to reduce the city's carbon emissions, we need to focus not just on renewable electrons going over the grid, but also on transitioning our gas supply, which provides heat, and our entire transit system. As provision of that resolution, you also stated that you wanted to do so in a just and equitable way that focused on previously marginalized communities. In order to do that, you must improve your transit. I know you know this, but we need to prioritize it. If we can't get year one of the Transit Master Plan funded, how are we going to surmount the even bigger hurdles to transition our entire system to renewable energy? I appreciate the money set aside in the budget for sustainability. I understand that the campus group is looking at how we are going to transition our electrons, but they are not looking at transit. The coalition at this point thinks that we need to advocate on two different fronts. That will be for the electrification of most of our transit individual-vehicle infrastructure and rapid transition to renewable energy, which will take increased investment from this group over coming years, but also for the rapid deployment of an improved transit system, perhaps some that can be funded through tourism dollars, given that tourists can actually ride the bus. When I moved here, I didn't own a car. My -- I was working under the Collider at the time, and it was easy enough for me to get from West Asheville down to the Collider most days. Some days, the bus wouldn't come, and I would walk, and it would be fine. My office is now on Merriman Avenue. There's absolutely no way to get across town in less than an hour and a half. I've ridden the bus up Merriman Avenue for lunch and not been able to get back to my office. Transit equity is an important component. People that live below the poverty line deserve safe and equitable transit. We also all need to be considered transit riders if we're going to make the great transition to renewable energy. We need to be a city that is transit-first, and I hope that you will prioritize this in this year's budget and as well in budgets to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so switching back to someone who didn't sign up on one of the sheets, Scott, you want to go? And then Kim, I have you. Kim Rooney, I have you next with a couple of people ceding time to you.
Good evening. Scott Mullins, president of the Asheville Firefighters Association, representing over 93% of the members of the Asheville Fire Department. Mayday, mayday, mayday. Three words that you don't want to hear on the fire ground. It's a call for help for a firefighter in trouble. Just a few weeks ago, in West Asheville, firefighters responded to a structure fire with a reported person inside. When our firefighters arrived on scene, they were faced with a heavily involved fire, but they were ready to risk everything for someone they didn't know. It's what we do, right? It's what we signed up for. Our job is taking care of the people who count on us during the worst times in their life, even if it puts us in danger. It's what we do. The difference between that fire and most other fires at the Asheville Fire Department is on that day, there was a mayday call. It was called because the roof collapsed on one of our friends, Kevin Prophet, city of Asheville resident. Giant man, great firefighter. Well, that roof folded him in half, and it pinned him against the ceiling joist in the attic. He was doing the job that all of you count on him to do, and he needed help. Fortunately, we have great people at the Asheville Fire Department who quickly sprung into action and worked to get him free from the scalding roof joists that he was trapped in. Like you and the community count on us, we count on you. We count on you to compensate us adequately. We count on you to follow the pay plan the way it was intended to be followed. The plan was intended to be adjusted annually or biannually, and we're not even coming close. It's not happening. The Seagull Waters Classification Study was a $150,000 study that took an in-depth look into our city workers' pay. It was unanimously adopted by city council, and it changed the step progressions in the fire pay plan from 5%, which is a good raise, to a measly 2.5%. We were told, oh yeah, it's so we can take care of you guys when times are rough. We can always give you guys raises. This was done to ensure the steps would be funded evenly in those tough years. The study also recommended that the plan be reviewed annually or biannually to maintain market competitiveness. It's not happening. The review was done in 2016, but not in 2017, '18, or '19. It's really hard to recruit people into a firefighting career when they know they have a significantly greater risk of being diagnosed with cancer or PTSD. It hit home this year when we lost Karen Schuer.
Can the six of us see our time to give them a full 10? Sorry, we didn't see a chance to say that at the beginning.
It hit home this year when we lost Karen Schuer to cancer. And Will Willis last year to cancer. And who knows how many of us have PTSD in the fire department? That should be something that we take home to our families, but we're willing to do it. We're willing to do it to take care of the people of Asheville. But the lack of adequate compensation for new and current firefighters also negatively impacts the fire department's ability to retain and recruit diverse employees from out of the region into western North Carolina to work. Our community values public safety. We know that. Last summer, the city contracted with a professional consultant, I'm sure you all know, to complete the National Citizen Survey, a statistically valid survey of Asheville that included a prioritization of potential city investments. The results of this survey helped to identify what services are most valued in our community and where opportunities to improve service exist. Guess who came out on top? You probably already know. Public safety. We're the number-one most valued service. It's the people that make public safety great. Councilman Young, thanks for bringing up the $15 minimum wage. It's a serious issue for us. I see both sides of the argument. You know, I'm all about raising our employees to $15 per hour. I think it's great. It definitely needs to happen. Our new firefighters are struggling financially, and unfortunately, many qualify for government assistance programs. You believe that? Government assistance programs for the dangerous job that we do. I would absolutely like to see our new firefighters earning $15 per hour. I hope we can get them there. But our pay plan is based on rank and time and grade, too, and with rank comes extra responsibility. If the city of Asheville gives approximately 30-plus percent raises to new recruits, we love it, we think it's great, but Asheville Fire Department members who have more certifications, higher rank, and more time on the job will definitely feel devalued. Compression and morale, which is already a huge problem at the fire department, will be a big concern, and many could seek employment elsewhere. I'm happy about the upcoming compensation study, but firefighters are struggling now, and we've heard we'll take care of you later. We need to pay $15 per hour for our new hires. We also need to pay current Asheville Fire Department members fair market value wages. Please follow the fire pay plan, the plan the way it was supposed to be intended to be followed, and adjust the steps to fair market value. Our firefighters deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kim, I have you signed up next to speak. And I have that Amanda Shive and Anthony Abrera are ceding their time?
Correct. Well, they already ceded their time.
Somebody else?
Correct.
Okay, so you're just for the three minutes.
Mayor and city council, this is my fourth year attending the budget hearings, and today I stand before you with two requests. I was very pleased to hear our new city manager, Deborah Campbell, say tonight that the implementation of the Transit Master Plan would be a pleasure if we had the funds. I can also share that the multimodal in the Transit Committee that I serve on, both endorsed last -- endorsed last week, full implementation, including the evening hours. And now I'll speak for myself. I am thankful for the six of you who noted at the retreat that funding of the Transit Master Plan was a top priority, and now it is time to lead on funding to follow through. Staff need your direction to begin negotiations with the management company for the extended evening hours and negotiation with Buncombe County for paratransit, especially considering our diminished pool of 5307 funds, which they draw from. We need to break down the wall between the city and the county. Though I'm thankful for inclusion of the yellow routes to the south side, we are not easily distracted. It was never enough to consider inclusion of the S4 as the compromise because it never should have been excluded. You are right, and we need this to be so, that ensuring the evening hours in this budget cycle will indeed provide a base for next year's continuation budget, which is why I'm among the transit riders, support staff, and allies asking you to commit that funding, the entirety of the TMP while the city is in a strong financial situation. You cannot be both a transit advocate and also say that you support partial funding of the Transit Master Plan by supporting the draft budget. Please do not be the reason that the next 10 years of the Transit Master Plan get to getting delayed. Second, in regards to the 15-hour base wages for staff, this means that 141 employees, including 50 firefighters, will be closer to qualifying for the city's new down payment assistance program. I want to add that we will not be able, because we are not easily fooled, to meaningfully move towards 21st century policing until our line officers that interact with the public can afford to live here in the city, which means going to the grocery store with us and their kids going to school with ours. Now, I want to go on the record with you in addressing the false narrative that questioning items in this budget means a lack of support for our city manager. As a taxpayer, I need you as my representatives to do three things. Set policies that reflect our shared community values, allocate funding to achieve them, and direct top-level staff to carry out the duties of the city. Blanket support for our new city manager at this crucial beginning of our working relationship is not what we need, but it sells well. Those of you who claim support for working people in Asheville need to act now so that everyone working in City Hall will hear a clear message. It's a new day in Asheville. We're going to give the city manager what she needs to progress forward, not with what was handed to her from behind her, but what she is capable of in the years ahead. We have heard from you that what we can't do when we needed you most around House Bill 2, anti-discrimination, meaningful police forms. We need you not to say can't, we need you to say can. Our requests are reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and do I have anyone else? Yes, this gentleman back here on the aisle. And then the last person I have signed up to speak is Mr. Bach, so you'll be next, and then we'll go --
Yes, I'm back.
Yes, you. Or no? Okay. My pointing is very incorrect, apparently. Never mind about Mr. Bach being the last person signed up to speak, I now have more people signed up to speak. Yes, sir.
Hello, councilman. My name is Michael Stratton, local resident. Already? Out of that. Anyway, local resident, I live in Oakley, also a local real estate agent here in Asheville. I grew up in the area, out in Waynesville. And, you know, I'm gonna have to admit to you, I'm pretty nervous to stand up here. My fingers are tingling, I'm trembling to stand here and do it, but I feel like it's a necessity. I feel that I must, and I'm emboldened to do so because of many things. You know, number one, I'm emboldened by the ruckus chorus of thousands of Asheville citizens on the other side of this wall. I can almost feel this wall vibrating with the chorus of people who want you guys to fully fund the transit system here in Asheville. I'm emboldened by the elderly gentleman that I rode next to on the bus who told me back in the early '90s, we had a bus fleet of 35, and now we're somewhere, you know, around 17. I don't know if that's accurate, but I know that we used to have more, and that was before Asheville became, you know, the city on the map. That was before we had an influx of tourism dollars. I'd like, you know, to ask you today not to be bold, I just want you to do the right thing. I want you to do what my high school football coach asked all of his team at the Tuscaloosa Mountaineers football, you know, team back in the day to do, which was to do right, you know, fund this. If you want to be bold, go to Raleigh, knock on their door, bang it down, and ask them for the autonomy to use the money from the transit -- from the TDA. You know, we have an ample supply of funding at this point. It's not hard to find it. Go ask for it, please. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor Manheimer. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, earlier today, I had handed the city clerk a communication that I requested be delivered to you.
We did receive it.
And I presume it has, so I will not bore you with a repetitive reading of that, but there are highlights of it which I would like to request be heard, and to the extent allowed by the -- And to the extent allowed by the council's hearing procedures on public hearing, I would request that the communication be considered as part of the record of this hearing. My communication requested that you delete from the proposed budget the sum of $1,250,000 line item appropriation, which appears at page G22 of the budget, that would be used to finance the removal of an important lane on Charlotte Street, which would limit vehicle traffic to three lanes in order to accommodate some occasional bicycle sporting enthusiasts. Official traffic city studies have already indicated, and they are of record, that to do this, you will be endangering property and lives. Nothing has changed since that report was done approximately 12 years ago, when after a very in-depth study for the 2010 Asheville City Plan, the conclusion was that, quote, "The elimination of one traffic lane would allow space to provide planning strips of bike lanes along the edges of the street." The Charlotte Street corridor analysis from August 1997, prepared by the city's engineering department, indicated that if the street was redesigned into a three-lane section, the level of service would fall to the lowest level, which is F. And F means forced or breakdown flow, gridlock, longer queues, lots of congestion, no maneuverability, driver comfort poor, with irrational behavior, panic, very unstable and unsafe conditions. Pedestrians, pedestrians face a very unstable and unsafe condition. It has been rumored that somebody who was hired by the city has suggested in reviewing this, that there is less traffic today on Charlotte Street than there was years ago. Well, I guess they must be part of those who deny that it's, it's getting warmer. They probably think it's getting cooler today outside in, in our climate rather than getting warmer. It's amazing that someone would come with that type of suggestion. Finally, I think the most important part of my address to you, members of the council, was the last paragraph, that at a time when this city finds itself financially underwater with only the taxpayers' pocketbooks, to bail, to bail our city out, I respectfully submit that there are more pressing things that we can be spending $1,250,000 on.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Including the firefighters.
The gentleman in the light blue shirt, yes. If you'll just state your name.
Yeah, hi, I'm Brad Rouse. I'm a volunteer executive director for Energy Savers Network. And I just wanted to say a couple of things about this overall conversation, and I am signed up to talk a little bit later, and I'm going to not do that, I'm going to do it now. I think we have two major, major problems in our society that are coming out in the discussions. And that is climate change and inequality. And they are so huge that we need to do something and we need to do something now. We can't wait on addressing those problems. We, but you and I, I really feel for your jobs because you're, you suffer from a tyrant. You're under the tyrant of the way we've done things before. You're under the tyrant, the tyranny of not being able to, you know, of just inertia. And how do you get beyond that? And I think one thing that you do to get beyond that is, when you're addressing climate change in particular, you try to do things, Drew Jones calls it multi-solving, you try to do things that help on other problems. So you solve other problems while you're addressing climate change. And clearly, transit is an example of that. Trees are an example of that. You work on the climate issue, the work that I do with Energy Savers, it's, it's an example of that. You help people by, and you, and you address climate at the same time. So I'd encourage you to look at that, but in the end, you've got to pay. And how are you going to pay? And, you know, all I can say is something's got to be cut somewhere. You're either going to cut some other program, or you're going to cut some money that I have to spend because you're going to raise taxes. Honestly, I'd be in favor of, if you can't find somewhere to cut the money, it's important enough that you look at that number that you said you can't touch, which is the tax number. I know my property taxes went down the last time that they were changed, and I'm not sure why, but there's something wrong with that number. And maybe what you do is just throw this idea out there, you, you institute a property tax increase, and then you, you look for those other sources of revenue that are longer term. And when you get the law changed so you can address those other sources of revenue, you make that a temporary change and you roll those back. And so just please try to get beyond the tyranny of what we've done before and, and try to find some way to solve this problem because these problems can't wait for funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Sarah Benoit.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Benoit, and I'm here tonight just to say transit can't wait. It's time to innovate. It's time to make real changes, and it's time to do things differently, not because it's trendy, or cool, or it's going to get votes, but because it's absolutely essential that we build a future that's more sustainable and that protects both our natural environment and our economy, our home essentially, which is the earth. And I think transit is a huge part of this. I think it's time to do what you all and we all have said we're going to do, and that is fund the Transit Master Plan fully. I'm not going to go into any more detail because I think we've had some really eloquent people tonight talk about this subject. The last couple of things I want to say are a little more personal. The first is, I want you to know that I am not sorry that I write to each of you or that I have been showing up here to every city council meeting in 2019 because I want things. I'm not sorry I want them. I want to be living a more sustainable life. I want my neighbors to get to work. I don't want to stress about how I pay my rent. I want Asheville to become a better place, and I'm not sorry for that. And I don't show up here after I've worked an eight or 10-hour day to sit through this entire meeting, usually until the end, so that I'm fully educated about the decisions that you all have to make, because I'm just like so self-involved, I only give a crap about my needs. I'm here because I love my neighbors, I'm here because I love my community, and I just want everybody to be really thoughtful about the way you talk about that. Because I have to be honest, it hurts my feelings when I'm sitting through a meeting, and that's the attitude that more than one of you throws around. Like, we had nothing better to do. Like, we're all just so selfish, we just want what we want, we're here to just make everybody's life a pain in the ass, which we're not. And second of all, I really want to say to the city manager that some of us waited a long time for you because we really felt not represented by the last city manager in this place. And we don't come here because we're just trying to, you know, stick a wrench into everything and question your intentions and question the hearts of where all of you come from, but especially where the city manager comes from. We're here because for the first time in 20 years, I think we have a city manager that actually gives a rat's ass what we have to say. And so I just want you to know that, because the more times I hear other people saying that we're here to make you feel bad about your job, I'm sick of that crap. Because we're here because we actually think we got a city manager in place that is actually going to potentially put working-class people at the forefront of the decisions that get made, and we appreciate you for that.
Thanks. Okay.
I just, I just woke up in three of us.
Okay. Okay, firefighters, you decide who you want to come up.
My name is Rayner Angelovich, and I work for the Asheville Fire Department. Unlike most, I'm actually from the state of New Jersey, so I'm a transplant here. And there were a lot of, a lot of great things that brought me to this area and brought me to the department, to see the vision of where we're going, how progressive we are. And, you know, unlike others I went through the academy with, you know, a lot of them have a family, and I'm looking to build one. I just want to speak on the, the compensation and just to say that I'm really thankful to see the traction that it's gotten the past few months from members of the city council and especially the new city manager. But it is a challenge nonetheless. I just received my first promotion, and, you know, I had put off looking for houses for some time just because I knew how dismal the situation was. And then with this new payers raise, I was a little bit more hopeful. And just throughout the past few weeks, looking at the market, it's pretty clear that the, the numbers are still a pretty big challenge. So people say, oh, move, move to Waynesville, move, move to Marshall, but these places are pretty far. And I didn't move here to live in Waynesville or Marshall, I moved here to, to live here and for all the great things and all the passionate people that we see here today. And I just think that exposure on both ends of the community, as far as the fire department, being able to see the streets that we, you know, drive our trucks on, know where road work is, know where new houses are going up, and just to really be integrated into the community. And to be able to show up to somebody's house on potentially the worst day of their lives and be a familiar face, to say, wow, I know him because my son plays soccer with his daughter. Or to say, oh, I saw him the other day at the gym, and, you know, he's, he's really a good guy. And just to have that, to have that sense of, of community really is, I think, very big for us and for our job. And financially, you know, I think to bring our wages up to competitive market value would be huge, and it'll bring a little bit of stress off of myself, because to be honest, some days I work a really stressful job. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have signed up to speak is Roy Harris.
Good afternoon, a good night, a good evening. My name is Roy Harris, and I am a 36-year resident of the city of Asheville. I came here in 1983 with a wife in tow, looking for a career and having a career for 30 years at a plant here. But that isn't why I'm here now. Asheville has been good to me. Asheville has been great. But I have another concern now. I have retired, so I'm starting to take a look at Asheville from retirement eyes. And one of the things that, as I look at, is that I have served the city of Asheville eight years on the school board and four years on the water of Thar. I put in my time with the city. So I'm asking for the city now to take a look at folks like me that are retiring into the city. Two things, or a couple of things. A lot of things that people have said here, it really affects me now. The master plan for the transit. My little red truck I fell out of love with about three years ago, and so I've started to walk all over the city of Asheville. I think there's only a couple of communities that I have not gone into. And there's a difference. There's a difference from one side of the town to the other side of the town. So that's important to me, the adoption of the master plan. My grandson asked me the other day, he's, he sort of hinted that granddaddy cannot come live with you. And I started thinking, will he be successful in the city of Asheville? Urban trees. I've walked so much that I can tell you where the sun rises, where the trees are, which street I know you to go down if I need to stay cool in my walking all over the city. It's just come natural to me now, so I have an interest in that. Now, just one last point. If Asheville is one of the highest gentrified cities in the country, then my neighborhood, south side, has got to be top on the list. I walked out of my house the other day and looked one block and saw a $420,000 house. I looked back and I could see the roof of my house where I paid $50,000 for. I'm thinking, what in the world is going on? But that doesn't change the story. I come a late, a week later, and there's goats in my neighborhood. These goats are eating kudzu, and I'm thinking it's just the goats eating kudzu, but when I really look at it and thought about it, I'm like, they're cleaning off a lot. And it's down in a ravine. Here comes some more houses in my neighborhood. So, those goats, my retirement, gentrification, all of those affect me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one more. Yes, sir. Do we have anyone else downstairs? We're all clear, okay.
Everfrozen.
Everfrozen, okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Silver. I work at the Asheville Fire Department. I was born and raised here in this town. Mr. Hayes, I went to school with your sons, Austin and Dylan. I believe you went to Asheville High with my parents as well. You know, this town, at one point in time, as the gentleman that just spoke, was houses $50,000, $60,000. It was easy to live here. Now, you come online, ask for a fire department, you make $11.94 an hour. But hey, we love what we do. We're going to risk our lives to try to help somebody. But when it comes to trying to balancing money to buy my kids Christmas or maybe take my wife out to dinner, we work 2,912 hours a year. So that's almost 1,000 hours more annually than the average person. Myself, several others, we also work another job on top of that. That might be another 10, 15, 20 hours a week, another 700-some hours annually that we try to make some more money, maybe to put back, maybe to have a retirement. There's a bunch of health risks, there's a bunch of bad stuff, but it's an amazing job. And everyone that's there loves it. They do it because of what personal reward they get for it. But it would be nice to get something cool for the kids, for the wife, maybe not feel like, hey, can I eat a bologna sandwich today? Or could I have a turkey sandwich today? With that being said, I understand it's hard to, to make a gallon of lemonade out of one lemon, but there's got to be some way that someone coming into the fire service in this city can make more than $11.94 an hour. And also, maybe down the road, look at something with benefits. We're looking to give them 30 years, the increased risk of cancer. I work on a hazmat company, so we respond, we're part of a regional response team, western Carolina, any hazardous materials. We just responded to the Rutherford's and Plant Fire. Like I said, it's an awesome job. I'm going to do what I can, risk my life to help somebody. I know at the end of the day, when I do die, I did something with the one life God gave me. But with that being said, there's no challenge what I'm being exposed to. 20 years, 10 years? I mean, I would like to think that the, the life I've lived has taught my kids to do something with their life to help out others. But I don't want them to see me get sick such as Will Willis, such as Karen Short, such as several other firefighters that we have seen perish due to the exposures that they've been around. As I said before, I don't want to take anything away from what anyone else has said tonight. And I understand it's a lot to budget, but I think something more than $11.94 would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Rayner.
Another man.
Yes. Okay, you already spoke. All right.
Hello, my name is Casey Campfield. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'd like to address Councilwoman Mayfield's comment regarding funding, finding additional funding for our essential city services with two suggestions. First, roll back the $1 million per year police department expansion that was passed last year. Put that money into services that help cure the root causes of crime instead of expanding our prison populations. Second, freeze or reduce pay raises for top-earning city employees. This flat 2.5% pay increase is inherently regressive. It means a $2,500 raise for someone already earning $100,000, but only $750 raise for rank-and-file city staff members making $30,000. How is that fair? How can you make an argument against bringing the base pay for city employees, including our fire department members, up to $15? There is no good argument for that. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, you, you didn't waive your time? I thought it was that. Wait, okay, wait, all right.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Breton Cooper. I've been an Asheville firefighter for four years now. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and also for the opportunity to serve the city of Asheville for the past four years. The reason I wanted to speak is I wanted to speak in regards to the 20 recruits that we just put online that are making, I believe it was $11.94 an hour. And I'd really like for them to not go through some of the hardships that I've gone through since I came here. I've been proud to say I've been debt-free my whole life, up until I became an Asheville firefighter, acquired a lot of debt just trying to make it from day to day, borrowing money from family, which was unfortunate that I was able to get that assistance from them. But due to those situations, at the moment, my wife and I, my four-year-old daughter and my one-year-old son, the four of us live in a 300-square-foot motorhome. And we're doing that to try and save money and get out of the debt that we acquired since I've been hired. And it's working. We're finally able to pay off some debt and hopefully we'll get to a point to where we can be debt-free again and we can start considering a home. And I appreciate the down payment assistance programs that have been put in place. I don't know if that will ever put me in the city of Asheville as a resident, but I'll still continue to serve proudly. But I mostly would just like to see all of our new recruits not go through the path that I've had to go through over the past four years. And really appreciate you all considering it and talking about it. I appreciate the dialogue here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wants to speak on the budget? Okay, sorry. And the next, right, got you.
I'd like to call this Happy Budget Day. Unfortunately, it's not a happy budget day. I come up here every year. You know, be far-fetched.
Mr. Peterson, just address this.
They're asking $15. Do you know what our salaries are total in the city? About $100 million. That's what y'all blowing. You don't give them any money. It's all the top echelon that gets the money. It's always the same thing. In three years, your salaries have gone up 18 million. I see the mayor's not here. Where's she at? Tell her not to hide. Come on out here.
Chris.
No, she needs to come out here. She's been our mayor. She has blown our budget so bad, it just shocks me. It really does. And you know, it's sad. Now, I did meet Ms. Campbell. I think that's a great choice. I like her. I think she's honest. She's not going to be like Gary Jackson and hide numbers and money that y'all have been doing for years. I'm sick of it. This whole city's sick of it. We're sick of your lies. We're sick of all of you that get up there and the next thing you're doing, you're running for Congress, you're running for Senator, I mean, you're running for everything. The mayor's going to run for something. You know what? You don't need to run for anything. You're terrible. Three years, your operating budget, three years, has gone up 18 million. Okay, salaries, operating budget, three years, that's 36 million. You tell me these people ain't blowing your money? I mean, they don't need to be up there. Greenways, bikeways, you know why they get the bikeways? Because everybody that's a department head is part of the bikes. They're a little group.
Mr. Peterson, please address this.
You know what? I'm going to talk. And you know, I've had a run-in with your husband, the big bike rider too. You know what? You're all a bunch of phonies. If I was on council, I would not pass this budget. You need to get a grip. Your transit authority is losing 7 million. You know what? 7 million. We have to have transit for poor people. But you don't have to blow 7 million. You've got electric buses that you paid 6 million that don't even run. Am I right?
Thank you.
You know, I wish I had more time.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
You're a phony too.
Thank you. Do you want, yeah, come on out. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Tiffany. Mr. Owens was, okay, sorry. I apologize.
Hello again. I'm Tiffany Devolo and my role tonight, this evening, is to represent the Human Relations Commission as the Chair of Asheville. And so tonight, the Human Relations Commission of Asheville recommends that the city council fully support the initiatives of the Minority Business Program Manager, both in policy and implementation, as well as financially, for the purpose of increasing capacity and performance of the minority business program. I would like to take a break because I have three people seated timed to me, and that is Davidson Jones, who is one of our commission members, and he had to step out to use the bathroom. And then Ms. Kim Maroney gave me two individuals from her list. And I would like to make sure.
I need them to raise their hand. I get the person who's at the bathroom. I need two more people to raise their hand.
Okay.
Didn't get it. Okay, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. All right, so just to give you a rationale of this recommendation.
Not to start, I mean, add seven minutes.
Thank you. So in 2018, the disparity study details the systemic and institutional inequities that minority-owned businesses continuously encounter. The HRCA, which is the Human Relations Commission of Asheville, is also committed to recognizing the history of marginalization for people of color in Asheville, specifically acknowledging the contention between black-owned businesses and the city of Asheville. The disparity study provided alarming statistics, such as black-owned businesses that received 22 cents for every dollar they might have expected to receive based on their availability for prime and subcontracts. The community members have expressed feelings of abandonment, isolation, and frustration with how the city has previously engaged black businesses. We are looking at making a recommendation, and these are our actions of request. Given the results of the 2018 disparity study and concerns expressed by community members regarding the city's desire to address these inequities, the HRCA recommends that city council fully support increasing capacity for the minority business program in order to support the minority business program manager. The HRCA recommends supporting the following. One, support race and gender consciousness policies such as good faith efforts. Budget the requested $60,000 to support capacity building and community outreach efforts for the 2020 fiscal year. Prioritize increasing capacity for minority business program and funding additional staff, community consultants, with lived experience, so that is individuals on a local level here in Asheville, as well as trusting and relying on their expertise and utilizing performance metrics to evaluate the effectiveness of the program. Lastly, to advocate for interdepartmental participation in increasing and procurement among black businesses. We see that the community has a distrust with the city of Asheville, and we want to ensure that we are working together to build capacity and to mend the relationship between black and brown businesses in the city. And so, we are urging, as a Human Relations Commission, that the city council support this recommendation as an opportunity to make strides to a more equitable city. Thank you.
Passed him over accidentally. Sorry, Scott.
Scott Owen. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor. I can only repeat what so many people have already come up here and said, and I think it's important to repeat it. We aren't debating here whether transit is a good thing for our city and effective and efficient transit. And we're not debating whether social justice in the form of supplying rides to people is an important thing. We pretty much all agree with that. What we are debating, and that's why I think it's important that so many people do speak, even if we're repeating ourselves, is what we're going to prioritize. And I agree, again, with so many people have said that it's not that we don't have the money, it's how we prioritize the money that we have. We are talking about fixing up Charlotte Street over here. I just walked up Charlotte Street. I didn't have any problem walking up Charlotte Street. I got here. But there are people on the south side of Asheville who couldn't come here at all because they don't have a bus system. So I really am hoping that the city council will listen to the citizens who have shown up en masse once again to let you know what their priorities are because, of course, your job is to represent the citizens of the city. So with that said, I don't have much else left, but I do hope that you will support the master transit plan. I hope that you will also support the tree initiatives that people are trying to get passed. And I would like to throw one other thing in here that's very off-topic. I would really love to see you hold meetings in a room that accommodates the citizens of Asheville so that half the people aren't down in the basement when we're having these important discussions. So thank you very much and good luck with the work that you have to do for us.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else who has not already waved their time who wants to speak on the budget? Yes, sir.
My name is Raymond Peaky. I was at a town hall meeting last week, and I just basically came up here today to just share my feelings about the police budget here in Asheville. I've been a resident here, born and raised, and I've been having problems with law enforcement and how they interact with me and individuals that I know from these urban communities. And it's just not right at the end of the day. I'm going through a lot right now. I'm currently going through a legal situation with the Sheriff's Department because of some stuff that happened last year. I was actually in a newspaper about it too. But I'm not really here to talk about that because, as of right now, the same things that they were doing back then that got me in the newspaper, they're still doing it now, and it's like they're getting more aggressive with it. I understand, I don't got no, my driver's license revoked, but like I said, since then, I've took the steps necessary to be able to drive by getting my privileged license and I've been doing everything to abide by them. And then some of the same officers that have been pulling me over after I got my privileged license still pull me over, even though they know I got a license and I'm doing everything that I, as far as abiding by those terms. Like I said, I got pulled over just yesterday coming out of the Sitco at McCormick Field, and I actually ended up pulling back in there and parking because I seen him get behind me and I knew he was going to pull me over. So somebody that got out the car and was seeing what was going on, he was like, hey, they pulled around the back, bro. So I was like, all right, appreciate it. So I went back there and talked to him, see what the problem was. He said he was pulling me because I had a revoked license. And I'm like, look, I've been going through this with y'all. Y'all should have some notes on it or something. You know what I'm saying? It's like, because y'all don't really have no disregard for me and what I got going on. So, because they keep doing it. And it's like, it's really just become a nerve-wracking with me because I've been going through situations, I've been set up by the police in the past and everything else, and it's just, I'm just getting tired of it. And if they're going to be policing the streets like this in these urban communities, then they don't need to be getting all this money. You know what I'm saying? Because their practices and the way they're going about policing in these communities, they're going about it the wrong way. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on the budget? Oh my gosh, okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. The vote on the budget does not happen tonight. It happens at the next meeting of the city council, but at that meeting, we do not take a public comment. So I really appreciate all of you who came tonight to speak on the budget. And I know it's kind of warm in here too, and it's very late and probably everyone's really hungry. So, thank you very much.
Is new business for next time?
We're about to do that next. Okay, so that concludes the public hearing on the budget. We have one other public hearing item. Council, we do have a closed session and we may need a break. And I see the applicants. Can you guys, man, is it okay if we do 15-minute break? Everyone is so tired they can't even respond. No? Yes, 15-minute break, okay. Do you want to do the closed session? We'll do the closed session. 15 minutes?
Fast.
Can we do it in? We're going to, we have goals. It's aspirational. We need a closed session motion.
I move that Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina and not considered public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes, a law that makes information privileged and confidential. It's North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31810E. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A1. Also, to consult with the attorney employed with the city about matters with respect to which attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit or potential lawsuit involving the following parties: PHG Asheville LLC versus City of Asheville. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A3.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Hold those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Nearby zoning, as you can see on the exhibit map, includes River District to the north and RM16 to the south and east. As you can see on the aerial, for those who may not be immediately familiar with the location, I think you will be now, Riverbend Shopping Center is just to the north, there's Coles right there. And then the existing multifamily development, residential development, Verde Vista is to the south. There's also, in the RM16 to the east, more residential multifamily development. The site, as you can see, does have its primary frontage on Bleachery Boulevard, but there's not proposed to be any access from Bleachery. The, sorry, this is my first time now without the papers, so it'll take me a minute to get used to it. This master plan shows the overall site with the phase under consideration, Phase 2. So the overall development has about 257 units. Its access to that development is from River Ford Parkway, and this phase will be accessed internally, so no direct connection to Bleachery Boulevard is proposed. The phase will have just one, a single building, 56 units, and about 84 parking spaces. So this zooms in on just that phase. You can see the vehicular connection, the driveway that will bring folks in and out of through the larger development. The applicant is including sidewalks along Bleachery Boulevard. Through the, past just the frontage on this parcel, the sidewalks will connect all the way to River Ford Parkway where there's existing sidewalk there. They are providing pedestrian connections from the site to Bleachery Boulevard due to the grade change. Due to the grade changes, you can see that that will be stair connection. There's also a stair connection from this site into the larger development. To further meet the mobility standards in the residential expansion zoning district, they are including an enhanced transit stop. There's an existing, just a stop that is on the opposite side, behind Kohl's. This project will move it over to their frontage and enhance it with a shelter and a bench and everything. There's a number of conditions that are associated with this development, and it's primarily because when we have the residential expansion zoning district, that's required for any development with more than 50 units, and this is 56 units. But it's really just, as you can see, the one building. It's not what that residential expansion zoning district had in mind. That was intended to be overlaid on a much larger scale development. So there's some conditions that come into play with that. I mentioned the sidewalks will be five feet. The zoning district standard is 10 feet. What's out there along Bleachery Boulevard is a five-foot sidewalk behind a five-foot planting strip with mature street trees that are already in place, so in order to continue that, that sidewalk configuration, it's technically a condition. Additionally, open space. The larger development has, meets the open space requirements. On this parcel alone, it doesn't, but this is an exhibit that was in your packets that shows the significant open space that's available to the residents of this phase. So that would be a condition of approval. There's another condition that has to do with parking not being permitted between a building and a primary access corridor. So Bleachery Boulevard is, is technically the primary access corridor. It's the only corridor that, that this parcel has frontage on, but as I mentioned, there's no direct vehicular access. We talked at length with the applicant about flipping and having the building closer with the parking behind. There's a 42-inch storm pipe that goes right through this site, and then there's also a storm drainage feature on the back of the site, so that's already, those create some, some constraints for doing that. Also, the grade changes when you're there, that, those buildings in, when you're along River Ford Parkway for the existing development, those buildings, the grade is different, and they're able to really connect to the street. They're right at grade in this, with this parcel. You're not going to have a building at grade, so there's really not a lot of activation that's going to be required. And also, because of that grade, it's not like you have a parking lot right behind the sidewalk, so staff felt like that was really, it was, it is an acceptable and supportable condition. There's another condition that was noted in the, in the Exhibit B1 list that has to do with the future transit master plan that's been a hot topic tonight. The transit master plan anticipates a reroute that would bring one transit line along River Ford Parkway, so the applicant has agreed to provide a license agreement to make sure that it's clear that transit can go along this River Ford Parkway, and so that would not be any impediment when that gets put in place. The applicant held the required neighborhood meetings. The project was approved with conditions by the TRC in February, received unanimous recommendation of support by the Planning and Zoning Commission in May, and staff recommends approval of this proposal. It's compatible with the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan that is, sees this area as an urban corridor anticipating high-density residential mix of uses with a high emphasis on pedestrian connectivity, transit. I feel like all of those boxes are really checked with the, the second phase for the Verde Vista development. So we support this project, and, and that concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Does the applicant wish to speak?
Maggie, I was still using paper. Does this thing work? My name is Bob Oost. I'm with the Law for McGuire Wood and Bissett. I'd like to thank, first of all, thank Jessica for her good and thorough summary of the project. Introduce some other members of the team here. Warren Sugg of Civil Design Concepts, an engineering firm here in town, did the site work, and Tom Egan of Mission Properties, who I believe is known to your city manager and perhaps to your city attorney, out of Charlotte. Let me, I'm going to give you all some handouts. I promise not to go over all of them, but, but it does contain some information that I think you all will find interesting. The, the handout mostly consists of photographs showing the site and the current conditions, and just to sort of illustrate one of the things that Jessica was talking about. That shows the grade differential between where the, between where the road is and where the, where the, where the parking lot and building will be, so it's, it's really kind of a significant grade differential there, and that's, that's the only photograph that I'm going to try and explain to you. The others are in the packet that is being passed around. Also in the packet are, are some information about the ways in which this project complies with the city's master plan. It's a pretty straightforward project. It's 56 units and one building. It's just over the threshold for conditional zoning, and, and that is one building in addition to what's already there. And what's already there is 200, I guess, more than 250 apartment units in six buildings, and though this is a separate project, it is internally connected, it'll share the access of some of the amenities. Among the things that were not in the staff report that I sent counsel an email about this weekend are, are that we will be providing 10% affordable housing in this project. We, we are providing a transit stop and transit shelter, ensuring, and ensuring that the city can use River Ford Parkway, which is a private right-of-way, for, for city buses and other city vehicles. And we are also providing a sidewalk, really in both directions, but most importantly, providing a connection to a Riverbend Marketplace, which is just down the hill. Jessica's staff report covers it all, and Jessica did a good job in, in her presentation to you all. There's not a lot else I can say. Again, it's an uncomplicated project, and, but I'm, I, I am here to answer any questions of Mr. Egan and Mr. Sugg, or two.
Good. Thank you for this presentation. So I look on page one of what you just sent us, and it says, "One additional building, 56 units, 10%, six units affordable for 20 years." But it's not on the condition list.
It was, that was negotiated, if you will, after the, after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Didn't come up at Planning and Zoning, but we, but, but we recognize counsel's interest in that, and that's, that's a condition that we're perfectly willing to, to have in the, in the list of conditions.
So you'll add it to your Exhibit B1 condition?
It will be added, yes.
And you'll talk to them about wording?
We, depend upon counsel's decision tonight, we can amend. The motion can be to approve or disapprove as amended to include that condition.
Okay, because I mean, that's, I think that's a fairly important condition that I'd, I'd love to see implemented, and appreciate the developer adding that.
And, and so, you know, we are, just to sum up, we are, we're addressing several needs that the city has, some of which have been identified during the budget discussions. We're, we're providing additional housing, some of which is affordable housing. We're, we're facilitating improvements to the routing for the transit system. We are, and we are improving pedestrian connectivity above us and below us. And we think there's a lot to like about this project, and again, we're happy to answer any questions.
Bob, I've got, just want to, you and I had an email exchange about this, but I just want to confirm that, that the, the Phase 1 of this project also includes 10% affordable housing.
I should have mentioned that. That's, that's correct. That there's, I think there's something like 20, maybe more than 20 units that, that right now are affordable.
So collectively, this, as a whole, will contain 20% of its units as affordable?
10%.
10% across the whole project.
Well, that's true, right, 10% there, 10% here. So it's, yeah, the numbers don't quite work out, but it's close.
Any other questions of? Okay. Okay. Thank you. We'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Uh-oh, we have a big crowd for Harris. Okay. All right, I will close the public hearing. Do I have any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I'd move to recommend approval of the conditional zoning request for Verde Vista Phase 2 from the commercial-industrial to residential-expansion district conditional zone for the construction of the new building and site upgrades, and find that the request is reasonable as amended to include the affordable, 10% affordable for 20 years condition that the city man, city attorney will wordsmith.
Specifically, six units.
Oh, yeah, six units, affordable for 20 years, and is in the public interest and aligns with the city's comprehensive plan in the following ways. One, this is an expansion of, of an existing residential development. Two, the future land use category is appropriate and supportive of this higher-density residential use. Three, the project provides pedestrian connections along Bleachery Boulevard and an upgraded transit stop. And four, the proposal is aligned with strategies found in the city's comprehensive plan regarding activating the pedestrian experience, citing uses along corridors that are supported by transit, and locating residential density proximate to other commercial uses, contributing to a mixed-use corridor.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, that concludes our public hearings agenda. We have no unfinished business, and we have two items of new business. The first is a resolution approving the selection of a sponsor for the naming rights partner for the Asheville Civic Center and authorizing the city manager, city staff, to initiate the steps necessary to enter into a naming rights license agreement with them pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-272. And Chris Correll, our director of the U.S. Cellular Center, is here to present this item. You know Chris is always like, "Do I start with tennis or basketball?"
Yeah, tennis. Good evening, I'm Chris Correll, general manager at the U.S. Cellular Center. I'll try to keep it pretty brief tonight. I know you guys have all this information, but we'll go through a little brief history first. So in 2011, council passed the resolution to approve naming rights for the first time at the center. It was a nine-year agreement, seven years plus two with a mutually agreeable, worth about $150,000 a year with U.S. Cellular Incorporated. It was a first to the city. It was a big leap, and we've come a long way in those last nine years. The agreement expires in December 2019, this coming year, and all possible extensions at this point have been executed. So our process for this, in July, we went to the Finance Committee, presented our proposed process, what we wanted to do, how we wanted to do it. It was approved for us to move forward. So at that point, Tuesday after Labor Day, we were sent out a press release announcing our intention to seek bidding, or bids for the rights of the naming. We announced a public meeting date and time, and we had a lot of media pick up for that. Asheville City Source, Citizen Times, WLS, Blue Ridge Public Radio, Ash Vegas, a lot of different groups picked this up, so the word really got out there. We held our public meeting on September 26th at the Cellular Center, and then on April 2nd, after going through the process then of actually negotiating with companies, reaching out, trying to find proposals, we presented our two proposals that we had at that point to the Asheville Civic Center Commission. Then April 10th, we did an informal presentation to the Downtown Commission, and then just last week, the Downtown Commission called a second special meeting to hear a formal presentation. So the mission and goals, part of our process was creating a naming rights subcommittee of the Civic Center Commission. That subcommittee created this mission and these goals that I'll, that I'll read to you. Our mission was to contract a licensing agreement with a notable company or individual that is culturally and socially compatible with the local community. So the goals of that, to reach that mission, is a company or individual that we feel will not micromanage the naming relationship, is willing to agree to a licensing fee agreement, or a licensing agreement of up to 10 years, including any mutually agreeable extensions, can enhance the customer or artist experience at the Civic Center via assets to be determined based on that company, and to help, and a company that can help leverage advertising relationships, whether that's through buying power or just through some free market reach that they might have. And then a company that's fiscally sound, that also has the ability to contract at a rate of a half a million dollars per year for the licensing agreement with cash or a combination of cash and trade. So where will we see the name? It's the first question everyone asks, right? Everywhere you see U.S. Cellular Center now is where you would see it. So our big monument sign that faces I-240, pole banners, street and wayfinding signage, receipts, ticket stock, uniform, credits mentions on either local or regional, national, webcast, TV, we have a lot of broadcasts that come in through the venue, all event advertising, the venue website, a small portion of the City of Asheville website, which basically redirects to our website, and the Asheville app, which is essentially the portion associated with parking. New this time around, when we went to the Finance Committee, we asked if we could incorporate the Civic Center parking garage naming, one, to increase the value, but two, it's kind of confusing to go to the Civic Center parking garage and then go to the U.S. Cellular Center. So that was approved, and we use that as part of a negotiating tool with companies. How did we get to the number that we asked for? So we used two methods. Western Carolina University has a business school that they reach out to local companies for big projects. We gave them a pretty extensive semester-long study that ended up with a report about an inch and a half thick, that boiler-plated it down to a total determined value of 300 to 315,000 annually. That compared 100 different facilities, the market size they're in, market sizes nearby, completely looked at the music industry and event industry as a whole, public venues, private venues, nonprofit venues. It was rather intensive, actually. And they put a caveat on their value that if a significant localized corporate institution was nearby, so venues tend to be named by big companies in that area because it's kind of like a community give-back, if you will. And then we, city staff, went through a thorough collection of all our brand impressions, so that's all those things I mentioned earlier, how many times eyeballs see those. That total number came out to a little over 180 million impressions annually. Then I used an impression valuator from the Cornell School of Hospitality Management, took that number over those impressions, divided it by two to be safe, got to 700,000, give or take, for our value. Then we went to 500,000 as our ask when we went out to companies, because we felt like that was a really good middle ground based on our two different valuation methods. Who do we talk to? We reached out to 14 different companies. Five companies had at least one follow-up. We had numerous conversations with three. Came down to two companies agreeing to basic deal points in writing with us. That came to our two offers, Harris Cherokee Center Asheville and U.S. Cellular Center Asheville. So the U.S. Cellular deal is essentially a continuation of our current agreement. It's a three-year agreement with a two-year mutually agreeable extension with a 2% annual escalator and a 5% attendance bonus annually if we meet those attendance numbers, which we have every year except for one since the current agreement went in place, and that one year that we didn't hit it, we were down for three months for renovations. Total potential value over the five years, including the attendance bonus, comes to about How U.S. Cellular meets the goals? So it meets three applicable council goals: a thriving local economy, a connected and engaged community, and a smart city. There's a lot of pros to U.S. Cellular. We've got a brand that's nine years in the making. It's really an accepted name here in the community. We've even started garnering a nickname as the Cellular Center, which is a good thing when it comes to free PR on radio and TV and things like that. We have low amounts of dedicated staff time to the relationship. Honestly, we work with them occasionally on the phone, but there's not a whole lot of hand-holding with the sponsor, which is a really good thing. It helps make our lives really easy to execute what we need to execute. It does not require renaming of the Civic Center parking garage, so that all things stay the same as far as the branding that you see around town. And they do have a really strong ability for marketing assistance regionally through text messages and other sources. Cons, comparable to the Harris offer, there's really minimal new revenue. It does not meet the target of the $500,000 annual sponsorship naming fee that we were looking for, and it doesn't give us that match for the video display infrastructure that we need, and we're going to be needing that really shortly if we want to continue hosting the Southern Conference Basketball Championships or going after similar other large sporting events. And if we don't go with the Harris offer, and we stay with the U.S. Cellular offer, council just needs to be really prepared to help support us staff in aggressively pursuing other sources of funding for the Thomas Wolfe. No one wants to be the first money-in whenever it comes to a major renovation project that the Thomas Wolfe will be. If we have dollars that people can match from the start, it's going to make our jobs a lot easier to raise that funding from outside of city coffers. Fiscal impact of the U.S. Cellular offer relative to the existing agreement, it's an additional $128,000. it's an additional $128,000 over five years. So offer from Harris, one other thing I should note, U.S. Cellular agreement, our contract, let's see if my laser works, nope. So the contract would be with U.S. Cellular, Inc. So Harris Cherokee offer, for full clarity, our contract would be with Tribal Casino Gaming Enterprise, a wholly-owned instrumentality of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians. Because that is so long, I'm going to continue saying Harris Cherokee. It would be a five-year agreement with a mutually agreeable five-year extension, $500,000 per year all the way through the term. It includes $250,000 year one for fan experience improvements, TBD on what those are, but mutually agreeable between us and the Harris team. An additional $500,000 in year one towards the purchase and installation of video displays, which is not just two video screens, it's actually a ribbon board and some other infrastructure specific to sporting events that's associated with the video displays. And in year one as well, which is not included in the 5.75 million number, an additional up to $250,000 capped to help us change out the signs. So that cost will be ours to front, but will be reimbursed. Pros and cons of how Harris Cherokee meets the goals. It meets all the same applicable council goals, both of these offers do. It's a significant influx of new funding earmarked specifically for capital improvements, $750,000 in year one funding towards fan experience improvements in the video boards. It greatly increases the intellectual property of the value of the facility for potential future naming agreements. So if we think five, 10 years from now, it makes it a lot harder for a company to come to us with a $300,000 offer. The enterprise over in Cherokee has a significant impact in WNC, so it really is that company that fits with Western North Carolina. And they have a really strong staff training program, and we feel like there's an opportunity for them to come in and help train our staff on a better level of customer service. And they have a really good ability for strong marketing assistance regionally, just like U.S. Cellular. Cons, it's going to require a lot of reeducation to the community, agents, promoters, bands. Everyone's going to not know what the Harris Cherokee Center Asheville is, so we're going to have to reteach them. It's going to take a lot of staff time to manage that brand change and the signage change out, and there's an unknown amount of dedicated staff time that we're going to have to put towards this relationship. The fiscal impact over the first five years, it's $3 million roughly in additional revenue and 4.75 over the total term if we extended for 10.
That's over and above the current.
Over and above the current, okay. So it's new money. This is your apples to apples. Because the Harris offer does go all the way to 10 years, if you're looking five years to five years, the total bottom line difference is 922,000 versus 3.25 million, just to give you an idea. So where will the money go? Currently, our naming license fee revenue is dedicated towards debt service from the renovations that took place 2011 to 2014. The debt service pays off in 2032, so the first roughly 170,000 of that 500,000 each year or of the U.S. Cellular's roughly 180, 185 goes towards that debt service. All the new money from that goes to Civic Center Capital Fund accounts to hopefully then go towards the Thomas Wolfe, but it has to stay in capital per our agreements. And COA boards and commissions. Our Civic Center Commission heard both proposals on April 2nd, vote three to two in favor of continuation with U.S. Cellular. We had one recusal as a member has the Eastern Band as a client of their company, and we had three members absent for the vote. We presented at the downtown commission in April as an informal presentation, no action taken. Last week, on Thursday, we did a formal presentation with the downtown commission, who then voted six to one in favor of accepting the Harris Cherokee offer. There was one commissioner who had to leave early and could not vote. That's all I have for my report, that concludes mine. However, we do have representatives from U.S. Cellular and Harris that would both like to speak. If it's permissible, I'd like to have U.S. Cellular come up first to have the opportunity.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Chris? Okay.
This is Chris Stokes with U.S. Cellular.
As Chris said, excuse me, Chris Stokes with U.S. Cellular, I'm the director of sales. I'd like to introduce Dallin Mace.
I'm Dallin Mace, business area sales manager supporting Asheville.
I'd like to thank the city council for giving me this opportunity to address the council on behalf of U.S. Cellular, and for the purpose of furthering our now eight-year partnership. U.S. Cellular views the Civic Center naming sponsorship to be mutually beneficial, a mutually beneficial partnership that we strongly desire to continue for another term. U.S. Cellular, if you're not already aware, we're the fifth-largest full-service wireless provider in the United States. Our focus of bringing advanced wireless communications to mid-sized cities and rural communities throughout the United States, areas often overlooked by other major wireless carriers, gives us the ability to make a positive impact on cities like Asheville. I view U.S. Cellular as a force for good in the community, connecting families, connecting first responders, connecting critical infrastructure, and enabling government to serve the public good. But we do more than just connect calls and transmit data. We enhance consumers' lives. We increase the competitiveness of local businesses, and we improve the efficiency of government operations. We are more than a company, we make a positive impact. We made significant investments in the Asheville community and throughout Western North Carolina dating back to the mid-1980s, when we launched cellular service here. And we look forward to investing in the Asheville community and continuing to build vital communications infrastructure here for the next 35 years and beyond. Continuing the naming rights sponsorships of the Civic Center is a perfect match for our outreach approach that strives to build a connection with the communities that we serve. We support causes that strengthen communities where we do business and where our associates live and work. Just a few examples of how we positively impact communities we serve would be our national partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of America, where more than $35,000 has been donated locally to the Salvation Army, Boys and Girls Clubs of Asheville and Buncombe County for after-school and academic enrichment programs. Our donation to Jason Learning to further stem educational curriculum, The Future of Good, a program that shines a spotlight on the young humanitarians that go above and beyond to better their communities. And I wasn't aware I had the three minutes, so my apologies. Let me just, in closing, we put a lot of thought and consideration into our naming rights sponsorships. Our sponsorships are aligned only with properties that serve to enhance and strengthen their communities. We have a strong desire to continue this partnership. Thank you for your consideration of our offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And he mentioned it briefly, but U.S. Cellular was the first wireless carrier in Western North Carolina, in case any of you didn't know. Next up, Brian Sunook and Brooks Robinson from Harris Cherokee.
Maggie, I'm going to assume we're still under the presentation part of the, I mean, in terms of the timing. It's very strict.
Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Brian Sunook, I'm the vice president of marketing for the Harris Cherokee Casinos. I would also like to introduce our senior vice president and general manager, Brooks Robinson.
Thank you, mayor, and city council for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight. Thank you.
It's my pleasure to give you a little bit more background information on Harris Cherokee, specifically who we are and some of the activities that we feel are our core values. Harris Cherokee is a locally-owned business, it's owned by the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians. We have a 22-year track record of sustained growth and economic impact and community involvement in Western North Carolina. Harris Cherokee comprises one of the largest and most successful gaming operations in the country, but we're more, by far more than just a casino operation. We have developed a diverse portfolio over the last decade of non-gaming amenities that visitors from all over the southeast look for. The resort in Cherokee is home to the largest hotel in the Carolinas. Between the two properties, we have over 1,700 hotel rooms. Our 3,000-seat event center hosts 30 concerts throughout the year. We have two bowling and entertainment complexes, and customers can choose from 17 different dining options, they can relax at the spa or the pools. And we're currently under construction to add additional conference space, an additional hotel tower, and retail shopping. This expansion is expected to finish up in early 2021. So I also wanted to give you information on why we bid on the naming rights for the Civic Center. That question has come up, and Chris did a great job of explaining the business case for that. We value our sponsorships in a very similar manner. But we also look for partners that are compatible with our values, our code of commitment. That's what I wanted to give you more information on today. Our code of commitment is centered around three key principles. The first is our people. So that's our employees, our guests, and the communities that we serve. And education, health, all those components are important for our guests, our employees, and our communities. And we're responsible for 5% of the total employment in the eight westernmost counties. We offer tuition reimbursement programs for our employees, paid internship opportunities, and we fund the Harris Cherokee Tribal Scholarship Fund. One of the items that I'm most proud of is that the profits from the casino operation have gone to the construction of the picture you'll see in the right-hand corner. That's a K through 12 school complex that was built with profits from the operation. It also goes to fund, fully fund, paid scholarships for every enrolled member of the tribe to any institutional degree program, so things that I'm very proud of. We offer our employees medical and dental insurance, retirement 401K, and the profits from the operation have gone to build a new hospital complex, a dialysis center, and a crisis stabilization center. Other components that are key to our code of commitment include PLANET, which is how we care for our environment. And that program that we refer to as Code Green kind of ties together all the programs, including composting, recycling, water and energy savings. In fact, in Murphy, North Carolina, at that property, a solar farm provides 10% of the electricity that the property uses. And the third component of our code of commitment, we use the word "play" to represent the longstanding commitment we have to responsible gaming. We appreciate this opportunity to give you some more information about Harris Cherokee. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, do you have a, you're going to wrap up, or no?
Do you have any questions? That would be my wrap-up.
Okay, all right, if no one has any questions, since this is not on our public hearings agenda, the way this will need to work, we either, we need a motion in order to hear public comment on this, or if anyone has any questions.
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt a resolution approving the selection of Harris Cherokee, an enterprise of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, as a naming rights partner for the Asheville Civic Center and authorizing the city manager to direct city staff to initiate the steps necessary to enter into a naming rights license agreement with them pursuant to NCGS 160A-272.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yes, we, hold on one second. We had a second, we had a motion and a second. And now, if anyone would like to comment on this item, you'll just need to raise your hand. And, yes, sir. Same rules apply, three, state your name, three minutes, watch the lights on the lectern, and red buzzer means stop.
Honorable mayor, city council, and city manager, I am David Nutter, resident of the Civic Center neighborhood. 55 years as a planner with Civic Center experience, a lifelong student of American history, and an advocate. I have struggled to decide what I should advocate in this controversial case, weighing the blessings and dangers of each choice. I base my opinion on the inclusivity in this case of Native Americans in our city. As the paintings on the walls above us so sadly depict, they did not receive much help when they needed it. We surrounded them, pushed them into shrunken hunting territories, and in the case of the Cherokees of North Carolina, relocated most along the Trail of Tears to the Oklahoma Indian Territory. Their new Achoda capital was abandoned, but the Eastern Band holds on to this day with the protection of the Quawal boundary around Cherokee. There is a need for amends, they are local. In a Western North Carolina Historical Association Educational Tour I organized at Cherokee, we learned that the Harris Cherokee Casino has greatly benefited the community within the boundary. This is truly a hard and controversial choice for our municipality to make. I agree with the position taken last Thursday by the downtown commission after extensive debate. I also respect the position taken by Explorer Asheville that an association with gambling is not ideal. It will require vigilance to protect against inappropriate commercialism. I wonder if mitigation measures might be undertaken to avoid or even transcend these impacts. I advocate that council accept the Harris Cherokee Center bid in the view that it is consistent with the race, equity, and inclusivity emphasis we are implementing. I believe that inclusivity is our signature as a community. Staff has indicated that the Harris Cherokee proposal, in addition to providing a significant influx of new funding for the Civic Center, also increases Asheville's link to the tribe and adds to the intellectual value of the center. The additional funds promised offer a major positive for Asheville and should be invested wisely to renew this immensely important city-owned facility. The selection process suggests that this level of investment cannot come in any other way. I would agree that acceptance will be a daring act. Thank you for hearing me, it is a privilege to serve a great city with a great vision.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this side? Yes, sir, in the white shirt. Well, okay, but.
Thank you, my name is Bill Jones, I'm a member of the Asheville Civic Center Commission. As Chris alluded to at the beginning of his presentation, our mission when we undertook the naming rights question was to try to choose something that was culturally and socially compatible with our local community. We hadn't been privy to the money before we sat down for a meeting, so if you're the first, the first time you see close to $6 million versus less than a million dollars, it is a little bit overwhelming. And I was on the Civic Center Commission when we chose the U.S. Cellular Center, and that was controversial that, back then, because lots of the city residents didn't understand why we just couldn't be the Civic Center. So in our debate, I think what it came down to is we know that we need to spend 60 to 80 million dollars to refurbish the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium to make it a world-class venue too. And this, of course, would go dramatically to that money. But as a community member, it was hard for us to swallow the fact that Harris, being part of the Caesar's Palace $6 billion corporation, really had anything. Palace, six-billion-dollar corporation, really had anything, didn't have Asheville in mind. All they had was the fact that they were getting a bargain and tying themselves to Asheville, as we saw from Chris's presentation earlier. If Cornell thinks the naming rights is worth three-quarters of a million dollars a year, and they're paying a half a million dollars a year, they're really getting a bargain. But I think the overriding reason why we voted against the Harrah's Cherokee name is that Asheville is not about gambling. People brought up beer and all these other things that we've established and bring lots of jobs to our community. Harrah's has done an unbelievable job in Cherokee. We've seen what they've done there, but they don't bring jobs to Asheville. They're just trying to piggyback on all the work that the Asheville community has done over the years in building its own brand. It is a ton of money, don't get me wrong, but we felt like tying ourselves to Harrah, Harrah's as a community when Harrah's is just a synonym for casino. You say casino, you think Harrah's, you think Harrah's, you think casino. So as a Civic Center Commission, and you guys put it on us to help advise you in all actions to dealing with Civic Center and Thomas Wolfe, we voted against it because we didn't feel like the Harrah's name is reflective of our community. Thank you.
Can we get some clarification on what entity he's talking about voted against it?
Civic Center Commission, three to two against the Harrah's name.
Okay.
For, we, we would rather have the U.S. Cellular say.
Okay, I got you. Yes, sir, let's go over here with the ball cap.
I'm here to represent my customers and the people of Asheville. My people settled Barnersville, and I moved back to Asheville in eighty-four, became friends with Julian Price.
Could you state your name, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Barney Bryant. I started and I own BD Barnes, and I'm all about Asheville being green, but I feel like Harrah's puts a stigma on the tourism base of Asheville, which brings in huge amounts of money. Harrah's is a big customer of mine, and I'd be glad to write you a check, and they can go away, because I've seen and experienced it destroy families, both affluent and the have-nots. And I know a particular family where the father went over and lost everything, and he came back and he shot his whole family and himself. And then I, I know on the affluent side of the same situation that has happened. I'm also partly Cherokee and on the Bradley side, and my dad reached out to Cherokee Indians and really wanting to improve them, and our home site is inside, our burial ground is inside the Smokies in Barnersville. But I've been in business here, and, you know, I just remember standing along with Julian Price and those of us that were trying to save Asheville for it to become something special, and we've become highly tourist destination. And I just, you know, in my heart, I just feel like we're making a mistake to let money buy, buy us. And I want to recommend that we stay with U.S. Cellular, and we promote GreenCo Asheville and what it represents. And, you know, I'm speaking, you know, you know, I've been, you know, we've been able to grow a company of a hundred employees, you know, and I feel like I stand with small business too, and, and families. In Black Mountain, I've just, I've just heard all the families, you know, with young children and just, just saying, this is, this is not good, you know, to get the image of Asheville being Harrah's. Harrah's, my, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for how these of you serve us.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Van Heaton. I live in Monford, maybe a mile down the road. It's a pleasure seeing y'all and giving opportunity to address you. As some of you may know, I spent a significant part of last year in Vegas. I had a great time, great town, liked this place better. The most shocking casino in Vegas is a, is a casino called Circus Circus. It is entirely geared toward making families come over there and make those kids feel very comfortable there while the parents are off spending their kid's college fund and their own retirement fund and a little bit of savings that they've got left. And I got to hang out with the locals, and what the locals know is that the entire raison d'etre of a casino is to hurt and feed on addiction, period, end stop. Other industries in this town have unfortunate addiction side effects. I appreciate that, but there is not a single bar or brewer of conscience in this town whose entire point is to feed off addiction. That's the point. It is wrong, period, end stop, to help an organization that unapologetically hurts people and feeds off addiction. The fact that casinos do this is extraordinarily well-documented. Everybody I'm looking at right now is extremely well-educated and can look this up on their own using some Google food. But the point is, is that it doesn't matter what the casino uses their money for. It's wrong to accept money to help an organization that unapologetically hurts people and feeds on addiction. It doesn't matter who owns the company. It doesn't matter that they're really local. It doesn't matter what other people do. It doesn't matter that other companies will accept their money for their billboards, or a baseball team will accept their sponsorships. That's completely irrelevant to the argument. It doesn't matter what the city does with that money. It doesn't matter how much of that blood money that the city accepts, because the bottom ethical case here is that it's wrong to accept money in order to help an organization that unapologetically hurts people and feeds on addiction. Now, I'm sympathetic to the persecution, the genocide that the Cherokees faced, but just like my main point, that it's wrong to accept that money, I can also say that two wrongs does not make a right. The Cherokees have their casino, they, they do very well with the money, blessings to them, but the reason why it matters that, that they want that logo on that city-owned public property is to create a positive association with gambling, with their product. Every time a child or one of our youth goes to the Civic Center, has a good time in or around that building, that logo, that brand is imprinted on their head. That's what they're paying for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Nina Tovisch, and I find myself in a really awkward position this evening because I came here intending to speak in favor of the Harrah's Cherokee offer, and I find myself rethinking that this evening, and for two main reasons. The first is about who we are as a city and what we value. We value local enterprises, we value creativity, we value our, our community that expresses itself in all different kinds of ways. Both of these offers come from huge corporations. One of them is, comes with a much bigger price tag than the other. Clearly, we could use the money. We just spent two and a half hours talking about money. Obviously, this money is not directly fungible, but it's indirectly fungible, and if we have to raise money in other ways, it would be nice to have to raise less money for the Thomas Wolfe. But what I, what I'm left wondering is, why is it that these are the only two offers on the table? This was my first view at the, the presentation. Unfortunately, I gather that fourteen enterprises were reached out to, and I'm, that seems like a small number to me, and I'm wondering whether we have exhausted our opportunities here with these two offers. This is a monumentally important decision that has a big price tag associated with it, and I guess my question to you is, is this, are, are these our only options? Could this process be extended a little further? Is there perhaps another entity that might better match the Asheville brand and our sense of who we are as a community? Honestly, I don't see that either of these companies really does have a special connection to our city and our sense of who we are as a community. So I offer those thoughts to you. I did come here intending to say, "Take the money," but I find that I've changed my mind, and I wonder whether this process could continue rather than be terminated this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Dennis Justice. I'm a resident of Fletcher. Ninety percent of my business is here in Asheville, and I've been involved with civic center politics since the days of the Asheville Smoke and Hockey Team. I've come here tonight to plead with you to accept the extension of U.S. Cellular's contract, and I'd like to remind you of those of us who volunteered many countless and thankless hours for many different events in the facility, when it was much worse than it is now. U.S. Cellular gave an endorsement to you. Too many times governments give endorsements to companies with our money. They gave an endorsement to you when no one else would. The Southern Conference Basketball Tournament would not be the success it is today if it was not for the volunteers, not for the Civic Center staff, not for the Sports Commission, and not for U.S. Cellular. It wasn't Harrah's. Harrah's is trying to piggyback off the success of what U.S. Cellular did by selling their seed. The same with the Fed Cup Tennis Tournament. It's been a smashing success, best, most important women's team tournament in the world, and everyone loves it here. It wasn't Harrah's that did that, it was U.S. Cellular. I do wish to challenge one number, the demand of five hundred thousand dollars a year, which is the stated goal. When Bon Secours took over the Bielo Center's naming rights, it was for four-point-five million over ten years. That was in 2013. That's a much larger city, much larger population, much better arena than our older Civic Center. As to talking about the Cherokee, I am part Cherokee. My late wife, God rest her soul, is part Choctaw. The Cherokees are actively pushing to prevent the Choctaw from buying land that used to be their old stopping grounds, for they were pushed away mostly in Oklahoma, while they're going out of their reservation to take a publicly-owned building and turn it into a giant billboard. The hypocrisy is jaw-dropping. Sequoia said all tribes should work together, all of them. That's the only chance they had against a white man, and today they still haven't learned. I want the Choctaw to get theirs, and I want us to get ours too. You know, there is a, there's a study, Nevada, penny slots bring in two-hundred-and-eighty-three million dollars a month last January in Nevada, and sports betting is fourteen-point-six million. This is all about sports betting. The sports betting bill that Senator Edwards is ramming through, which is a bad bill for us, doesn't help us one bit. It denies me a chance to open a sports book in my home county of Henderson or here in Buncombe. The reason they want to push this is to sucker the players forced into these two tiny casinos, no mobile betting whatsoever, and they're gonna lose their shirts on slots. Slots are for crack cocaine to gambling. I support gambling rights throughout the state. I want the Choctaw to get theirs, and I think it's a bad example. Think of the volunteers, think of the people that brought you to dance, and please, for the love of God, stick with U.S. Cellular. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, I think you were next.
It is unbelievable that I ended up here tonight. Unbelievable. Again, my name is Roy Harris. This question, I had no idea that this question would be on the agenda, but my brother and I are studying our Native American heritage, and we have been to the Lake Mademoiselle Native Americas who, in our hometown, which we played not one mile from where this reservation was. And then we found, someone called us from Alaska and said, "You need to go to southern Virginia, and there's a reservation there that your relatives may have come from," which is the Gen Gaskin Reservation. So we went to it last, two summers ago. Now here I am, I always look at these pictures, here I am, now gotta make a decision, and being a Baptist deacon, this is tough. But Grandma Moni and Grandma Polly is represented here. Grandma Moni, I'm wondering, what does she want me to do right now? And Grandma, Great-grandma Polly, what does she want me to do right now? I am completely conflicted tonight. Well, maybe Harrah, I remember there used to be a couture celebration here, maybe ten, fifteen years ago. We celebrated it in the Civic Center. It didn't last, but whatever, for whatever reason, so do I go with Grandma Moni and Great-grandma Polly to say, "You're finally coming forward. You have spoken to me tonight because it took the land away from you. Now, maybe this is my chance to get some of it back." Harrah, Casino, think about putting a museum right beside of the Civic Center to tell this history to every visitor, every visitor that comes to Asheville. Here's a chance to start that process.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, my name is Jonathan Wayne Scott, and it seems that Asheville is constantly struggling with how it's sort of losing our own identity as a city, and, and selling out to any corporation, I think, is a compromise to that effect. I don't think that, you know, U.S. Cellular's red, white, and blue with a star logo is really any better than Harrah's Cherokee red, white, and blue with a star logo. It all looks plastic, and it doesn't feel at all like Asheville to me, but I know that there's a lot of money. I think that the best thing that we could do is to name our Civic Center, which belongs to the people, after a native of Asheville in Buncombe County who's a really great person, rather than trying to please people with, you know, what's the, the best compromise for what corporation would be named after this. I think that keeping, you know, Asheville unique is to the benefit of our tourism and our attractiveness as a unique place, and I would like to see the Asheville Civic Center, such as it used to be named, named the Brad Doherty Arena. Brad Doherty was born in Nashville, North Carolina. He grew up in Black Mountain, graduated from Owens High School, enrolled in UNC at Chapel Hill when he was sixteen years old, got his degree from there, went on to play basketball in the NBA. He jumped the cultural divide of then becoming a NASCAR race team owner as a black guy, which is kind of crazy to me. Not only NASCAR, he had a NASCAR truck racing team. I mean, he's just a really awesome person, and so as somebody else said, you know, when somebody, people come here and they're left with this imprint of what the name on the building is, I think that Brad Doherty is just a, you know, awesome native son, a really wonderful person. He's planting trees on campuses, and he's helping Haywood County Community Schools, and so how do we get reimbursed for this wonderful thing that helps promote tourism here? Because the TDA has this huge mountain of money that it is using to advertise Asheville, and Buncombe is a great place to be. So if the, the naming rights to this building are valuable to Harrah's or U.S. Cellular, it should be valuable to us. We should be using this to promote ourselves in a, in a much better way than just, you know, collecting some money from a corporation. So I would implore you to take some more time to think about this and not vote on it, and see how we can get the TDA to pay for the opportunity cost of us not taking this corporate money so that we can create something that's really unique and bespeaks, you know, a great thing about Asheville, Buncombe County, and, and everything else. We should go in that direction. Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Anyone else? Did I miss anyone? Okay. Did I miss anyone? Okay. Okay, counsel, we have a motion. And a second, before we vote, does anyone want to say anything or ask a question?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question.
Here, Brian Puller. Yeah.
So, Chris, at the Downtown Commission, you explained that there was no possible extension here. U.S. Cellular is not interested in like a one-year extension. Because I'm really torn with all this. So they're here, and you're here. Will you tell us why that's not possible?
The value of just doing a one-year extension isn't quite there because we'll be starting this process again next month, and not enough is going to change in the local climate in that one year. The solution, if the council wants to move forward with an extension-style offer, is to take the U.S. Cellular offer for a three-year deal. Because three years, as you know, is a really short amount of time in city government. So that is the, that's the extension that we would want to look towards. A one-year offer isn't on the table, for one thing, from U.S. Cellular, but it's, the value's not there for them and us, both knowing that we're going to have to go back out again. And do we really think that another offer like we have is going to show up in one year? Probably not, but in three years, maybe. You know, it's like, we have to think about that as on the business side.
So what I'm thinking about with the one year is the TDA money, which they're not willing to commit at this point, but there's been hopes of possibilities.
Yeah, so the TDA money, Councilmember Haines is referencing the TMEP that I'm sure you guys are aware of. That process ends, two, two, that process ends in April of 2020. So by the time the process ends, there's not going to magically be money sending out right away, right? So again, the best offer to take if we want to do an extension-style term is the three-year agreement with U.S. Cellular, because that'll give us one year to get to the TMEP process, figure out where that is. It's probably going to take another year before they're at the point where they're going to be able to start granting money. And that gives us to the point that we're then one year out of when the U.S. Cellular extension would be over before the TMEP money really comes into play in the city and the community. Does that make sense?
Yes. And so, what if we took the position that we didn't want to sign with either one?
If we took that position, we would, one, have to work with U.S. Cellular about taking the name off of the venue, which it's specific in the contract that within a reasonable amount of time, we need to take all of their branding off of our facility. Being six months out, we would need to be prepared to do that in January. That cost is going to come in close to $200,000. And then additionally, like we mentioned before, the first $170,000 roughly every year goes towards our debt service that sunsets in 2032. So we would need to find a way to fund that debt service until we found a new naming partner or some other sponsorship opportunity.
Yeah, probably general fund, a general fund subsidy.
So, Chris, I want to thank you for putting that, that option, just voicing that option. That's the option that I was going to recommend, you know, having, and if, I don't have a question for you, I'm just going to, I'm laying the groundwork for where I'm going on this, since I think I may be in a minority here. But so, you know, this council, which I'm not sure, maybe only one of us was sitting on when this decision got made originally to sell the naming rights, sort of once we did that, you know, some people say, "Well, you've just gone down the road, and it doesn't matter what the name is, it doesn't matter what the partner is, who the company is, it doesn't matter." I think it matters a lot. I could probably say the names of lots of companies that if they were the bidding party here, this, this room, this entire building would be packed with people saying no. Just one example would be, oh, I don't know, Duke Energy. How would this city stand for that to be the Duke Energy Arena or the Duke Energy Center? I don't think, I think our emails would have exploded because of that. So the, it's just, I make that point to say, I think the name matters a lot. The Civic Center Commission recognized that by including this language that says the overall mission is to contract a licensing agreement with a notable company or individual that is culturally and socially compatible with the local community. And so, the question is, what is culturally and socially compatible? And when I think about Asheville, when I think about the things that drew me here, it was that Asheville is a progressive place. It was that Asheville celebrates the natural environment in which we find ourselves. We celebrate the arts, we celebrate music, we celebrate food, we celebrate Southern Appalachian culture, we celebrate local, we celebrate all of those things. And yes, we also now celebrate beer. I would, I would suggest that there is not, there is not an equivalency between Harris and beer, as many of the emails that we've gotten have suggested. The reason that we are Beer City, USA, is because we have created a craft of making beer here. It is not about drinking. We're not Beer City, USA, because there's so much drinking that happens here. I'm not saying there's not a lot of drinking that happens here, but we, Asheville has, has created the culture around beer because it's a craft. It's part of the artistry and the maker community that we have here. And so, it is, it's a fundamentally different thing for us to be Beer City in that way that attracted two of the top three craft brewers in the entire country to come here and open their second breweries. That, that's a, I mean, that, that's something that we, that I think we are and should be proud of. So, but gambling, as one of the other speakers said, is not part of all culture. Nobody thinks about Asheville and thinks about gambling. Now, I would be perfectly happy to be partnering with the tribe in some way. I think the tribe is absolutely part of our culture here in Asheville and Western North Carolina. It is a, it's a partnership that we should work harder to build and develop. I would love for the proposal here to have been to name the Civic Center something that reflected, reflected some aspect of Native American culture. But the name Harris is, as someone else said, synonymous with gambling, and it doesn't, it's, that, I think, is not consistent with our culture. So if it were up to me, I would reject both offers because I don't think either one meets the criteria that we've set out. I, however, do not want to make Chris's head explode, so, so my, what I, my recommendation is that we go with the shorter, with the U.S. Cellular Center, U.S. Cellular for the shorter period, and we try again really hard to find a corporate partner that is compatible with our community and with our culture. And then the final thing I'll say is that, you know, I think people may sort of think that I'm taking this position because I sit on the TDA Board or because the TDA Board has asked me to do this, and it's absolutely not true. I haven't had any conversations with board members about this. I'm actually incredibly sorry that the TDA weighed in on this at all because I think that has clouded a lot of the debate that's been out there about this. And so, it's, this is, this is Julie who moved to Asheville 11 years ago because of all those things that I mentioned, and none of them are gambling. So I will be voting against the motion as it stands, and I would be happy, if the consensus is such, to make a different motion.
Okay. Got it. Both of you.
Well, since I made the motion, obviously, I'm going to be supportive of this. And it is, it is contentious. We have received a lot of emails. But what I base, what I'm basing my decision on, it's incredibly generous payments that will help with the renovation of the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium, which is absolutely essential. The brand of Harris Cherokee will not confuse visitors that the Center is a casino, which was one of my original concerns. The Cherokee organization is very visible already in this community. If you go around, you see advertising a lot, and I haven't seen adverse effects from that highly visible presence. And as it's clear, that the Cherokee organization has been very generous to our local nonprofits. And to me, this is, this is recognition of that generosity, and I feel like it's pretty, it would be pretty disingenuous of us to be accepting that money on, from nonprofit, all those nonprofits to be accepting that money, but yet, we won't have it, we won't have that name on a building.
So, Chris, I had a couple of questions for you. And here, I mean, if you, we've sort of been talking, we've sort of been talking about the kind of the, I'll call it the revenue side right now of this. Can you give us a little bit of a sense, because since you run this center, sort of the expenditure side, like to talk to us in terms of kind of like what you're dealing with, you know, where you see this money going, you know? And if you could as well, kind of talk a little bit about the renovations with Thomas Wolfe and how you'd see either of these organizations or whatever kind of feeding into kind of the larger need to raise additional dollars to really rehab that Center.
Yeah. So I'll speak mostly capital, since all the money would go towards capital. So the Center for decades had very little capital improvement put into it. Until 2011, the backlog was insane, basically more than it would cost to build a new building almost. There was a significant influx in funds, almost $14 million over a four-year period to renovate the venue. We're putting another $2.5 million in on HVAC right now that we funded through our fund, through savings over the last few years on the budget side. And there's so much more to go. The Thomas Wolfe specifically, we've got some estimates and studies that are up to $40 million. We've got a design team right now designing a project to come back to us with a true budget that's real in $2023, I believe is what we've asked them for, so we have real tangible numbers to work off of. This money-
Sorry, Chris, because you said $2023, so that would be, just in terms of trying to think about the time, because what do I, I'm sorry, did you cut you off? One of the big concerns I have here is, is the funding of Thomas Wolfe, right? So how does, how does this, what we're doing here potentially feed into that? If I had to hear you correctly, is in terms of anything actually being really built, that would likely not happen five, until five years from now, four or five years from now?
Realistically, I mean, five years is like a really great situation. You know, it's going to take a lot of time to raise, let's say, $40 million. The last study that we use, or that we did, came up with that number for $2020, which is next year. So both, both entities, whatever money's left over is going to go to our capital account. We would put that in there, we would use that for leveraging funding, whether that's from foundations, other private sources, public entities being the TDA, maybe the county, maybe the city, maybe the state, whatever that may be. And a lot of those foundations, the TDA, we already know, they're match-based. So the more money you can build up, the higher your match can be. So if you have $4 million, you match to $8 million from a foundation, and you have $8 million that you match to the TDA, now you have 16. There's ways to build that up really quickly. As far as other connections, I can't speak to the Cherokee Preservation Foundation, but they fund a lot of different groups in the Western North Carolina region, and I think there's a lot of things that we could do that could have ties in with this group. So by connecting to the tribe, there may be other opportunities, and maybe not just capital, maybe it's in the programming. We talked to the Downtown Commission about the possibility of bringing onto these hills into the Thomas Wolfe for a residency, and let's bring the Buncombe County school kits here for a week at the beginning or the end of school, for example, and just have that chance for them to be exposed to that, because they're probably not getting that chance. So there's a lot of different opportunities. U.S. Cellular, they're national. Not that Harris isn't, but they're based here, and they've got limitations based on the legislation, right? So they're in the Western North Carolina region. But U.S. Cellular has that opportunity to really help us branch out with maybe some of their other larger corporate partners. They probably have connections with well-off individuals and other foundations. So both companies have the ability. The big difference here is that the Harris Cherokee funds gives us cash right away that we can play with, that we're not relying on someone else.
And that you need, right? I mean-
And that we need, yes.
Because again, the, you know, what's going through my mind here is, again, trying to figure out, trying to, trying to figure out, how do we, how do we fund Thomas Wolfe? That's really what I'm trying to think in my mind here. And, you know, the likelihood, right, if that, you know, if we, if we do get a large corporate sponsors, they'll probably want to have their name all over that, right?
Yeah, dare I say, we could name rights to the Thomas Wolfe.
Right, right. Well, you know, or the Center, right, depending upon how big, how big that investment is, right? In terms of, what I understand from the Harris bid is it's, it would be five years, and then, then there's a five-year extension that's mutually agreeable, which means that the city could, city us, that whatever council here could say, "Thank you for the first five years, but we're going to go, we're going to go bigger on this."
We could move on to someone else. We could go out to bid and stay with Harris if it becomes mutually agreeable. We could become Asheville Civic again. There's a lot of different opportunities there with how mutually agreeable would move on.
Okay. But again, but again, we have the right, just to make sure I understand this, in terms of what the proposal is, we would have, we as the city, or the council, would have the ability at that point, unilaterally, even if Harris said we wanted to go for another five years, we could, we could say, "No, thank you."
Right. And same on their case. If we said, "We want to, but they don't," they would also have the opportunity to say no, just like U.S. Cellular. Both would be structured in that same way of mutually agreeable extensions.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
I don't have a question. I'm just going to make a statement. I tried to be quiet tonight. I did. I am so sleepy right now. It is almost 10 o'clock. I'm sleepy. I'm yawning.
You don't have your drink here right now?
I don't have my caffeine with me tonight. I'm going to try to address some things I heard here tonight. We've got several, several folks that reached out to each individual council member, council as a whole, voicing their opinions about Harris and the U.S. Cellular Center and the naming rights. In no particular order, I'll just try to address some of it. Start with the city of Asheville and Buncombe County. I'll start with the city of Asheville. Charlotte is the biggest municipality in our state. West of Charlotte, the largest municipality, is the city of Asheville. And I heard some things here tonight about Harris wanting to piggyback off of the success of Asheville. And the truth of the matter is that Asheville is the economic driver of all of Western North Carolina. Everybody piggybacks off of the success of Asheville. That's why it's promoted. That's, you have all these different areas within Western North Carolina that have their own individual identities, that have their own specific facets of things that people come visit them for, whether it be nature, or the casino, or whatever it may be. All these different counties that make up Western North Carolina have economic success based on tourism that comes to Asheville. That's one part. So I don't think there's any piggybacking, per se. I would say Asheville is the economic driver of Western North Carolina. Secondly, I think, you know, by the TDA kind of putting their finger on the scale on this thing, it did, it did cause some people to, to have some attention on the issue, whether that be positive for the U.S. Cellular Center, or positive for Harris, or vice versa. It piqued a lot of interest. We got that. We saw that. With that piqued interest, with that piqued interest, I would say this, if, if the TDA was so up in arms about this process, it could have, they could have easily put in a bid and then be named the Explore Asheville Arena. It could have happened. They chose not to. They chose to weigh in after the fact, after it came out that you got Harris or U.S. Cellular. So that's another thing. The other thing that I would say is, and it's, it's been said here tonight, and if you ask, I would say this, there is no moral superiority on what Asheville's brand is. I've heard some people in emails and phone calls and in passing, and even here tonight, say that Harris is this monster that breaks up families or whatever. There's no moral superiority on what the brand of our community is, because ultimately, it was mentioned here tonight that when you say Asheville, when you go around the country and you say Asheville, people automatically say Beer City, USA. And we can, we can, you know, play it all we want, that beer is this great thing that we have in our community, and it's morally superior to gambling, but, you know, I don't see schools giving back money for the lottery. And when you start talking about beer and alcoholism and all the other things that come along with it, I just quickly pulled up Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And anybody can have statistics, it's, they're out there. What is this? Every two minutes, someone is injured in a drunk driving crash. Every 51 minutes, someone is killed. Drunk driving is still the number one cause of death on our roadways. You can continue and go on and on and on about some of these things as it compares to drinking. 4,300 people are killed each year due to teen alcohol use, more than all other drugs combined. Uh- 4,300 people are killed each year due to teen alcohol use, more than all other drugs combined. Number one car crashes are the leading cause of death in teenagers through drunk driving. You could easily put that out there. What I'm getting at is, there's no more superiority on this. These decisions up here about what has to happen with the naming rights, to have naming rights of a venue is about money. That's what it is, it's about money. It's about being able to put our facilities in good working condition so we can continue to have the tennis tournaments, and we can continue to have the SoCon, and we can continue to try to make Thomas Wolfe what it needs to be. And, you know, I'm pretty sure I can catch a lot of grief for what I'm saying up here. But again, when people see problems, there's opportunities for leadership. I'm going to support this. I think that the amount of financial support that Harris is going to be able to provide for our arena, and our ability to be able to keep future programs in the city of Asheville, is going to be beneficial in the long haul. At that five-year period, if Explore Asheville wants to put naming rights on the venue, they could possibly do that. If there's other entities that want to do that, they can do that. But that's where I stand, and I'll just leave it at that.
Anyone else wishing to speak outside of?
I guess I'll just wrap up by saying, I really appreciate both entities putting in a bid for the naming rights. We appreciate that. There was a question about, you know, have we really exhausted all opportunities? And I'm quite satisfied that we have the, we have a great staff who has great experience with this, and has really taken this through a very professional and thorough process. You know, the fact of the matter is, we're not, you know, we're not Atlanta, or Seattle, or Denver, you know, so we're not as big a player, I think, in the naming rights business. So we're fortunate to have a couple of different options to pick between. You know, I was sitting up here looking at a list of all of the named sports venues in the entire country, and my favorite is Smoothie King, I think, so far. But you can pretty much find power companies who've named arenas, you can find banks, of course, insurance companies, you can, you can, you name it, somebody's, well, you name it, literally, somebody's named it. And, you know, and I think that, you know, some people are disheartened by the whole concept of selling naming rights, just on principle, they like, they are wedded to the name of their local facility, or in our case, the Civic Center. And I appreciate that. I think the reality is, if you, when you hear the budget discussion we had tonight, is that these facilities otherwise take great subsidy. And I don't, you know, if I were to say to each taxpayer in Asheville, "Do you know how much of your money every year would have to go to subsidize a facility like this to continue to keep it operating, even though it hosts all these events and people pay for tickets to attend there?" There still is a great cost of running a facility like this. And on balance, I think that we must continue to offer amenities like these in our community. They're gathering places for people to see each other and spend time together and bring great quality of life. And so the fact that they do need subsidy is, I've wrestled with that and I'm fine with it, but when you're talking about all the things we put in the subsidy bucket, whether it's tennis courts, or parks facilities, or the nature center, or municipal golf course, or even McCormick Field, you name all those different facilities, cost money, and to some extent, we, the taxpayers, specifically, more the case in Asheville property taxpayers, are helping subsidize those facilities. So we're trying to be creative and looking for other ways to provide funding to keep those facilities up and pay for them and continue to offer them as a place to congregate. And you probably don't want to get in the weeds in all this, but I remember when we were trying to get the Southern Conference bid, I mean, we had to do things like redo the locker rooms, because they weren't up to the standard of the visiting teams that would use them, or put in a scoreboard, because you have to have a certain quality scoreboard before basketball tournaments will come to your arena. So those are the kinds of things that our management staff has to think about, crunching numbers, and we really do want to, here in the near future, not only continue to outfit the Civic Center, we've replaced seating, we've done things like that, to continue to do that, but also to start to address the Thomas Wolfe issues. And that's been a multi-year process already, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to complete that process. So, you know, I have been pleasantly surprised to see how many emails in support of this, of the Harris bid, we have received. Asheville, you continue to surprise me all the time, you're just always keeping it real for me, and that is special. So, you know, tonight, I am looking forward to voting for the Harris proposal and see where that takes us.
Yeah, you tied that up really nicely, but I just, I'm going to muddy it up just a little bit.
Go ahead, muddy.
So just real quickly, there was a statistic that I was talking to some folks about behind the scenes, and I got the statistic wrong, it was about Asheville being, I was saying, the highest DWI rates in the state, it's actually the highest DWI conviction rates, I believe, in the state, if not the highest, one of the highest. And so just by saying that, again, going back to what I was saying, which was, when I quoted the Mothers Against Drunk Driving stats, that I don't think there's any more superiority between that and Asheville's potential brand. Yeah, I threw mud all in that, sorry.
That's good clarification. And now we would like to vote, well, I was like, I'm already, so I'm kind of hot and tired. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Do you want us to raise our hands? Okay, Maggie, ready? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that person opposed, raise your hand. Okay. Gwen would like to say something?
Just, I really, on behalf of the city and the US Cellular Center, really thank US Cellular for coming forward years ago to help us, you know, start the process of naming rights, and you've been a great partner over these years, and just really want to thank you for your relationship with the city and the Civic Center and the US Cellular Center. Thank you.
I hope we give the tribal council a run for their money on our long meetings. Said it's a rivalry, but here we are, five hours in, okay. We have one remaining item on the council agenda, and if everyone who was here on that last item, just make your way out quietly. I am going to turn it over to Councilman Keith Young to talk to us about the second item underneath this, a request to name police headquarters in memory of former police lieutenant Walter.
So this came shortly after the death of former Lieutenant Walter Robertson. I had made a suggestion per our public property naming policy, and requested that the police headquarters be named in his memory. That's Mr. Walter Walt Robertson. And basically, this request is to, well, the steps of this request would be for, to have it be put on for a public hearing at our next council meeting, where a public can come and give input on how they feel about the request. For those of you who are not familiar with Mr. Walter Robertson, he was the first black lieutenant in the city of Asheville. He was an Asheville native, graduated from Lee Edwards High School, decorated Army veteran, earned several campaign medals, including the Purple Heart, 30 years of service in law enforcement, that's with the Asheville Police Department, as well as the Sheriff's Department, did a lot of community works. And so that is what this pretty much is, is to go ahead and get this put on for a public hearing at our next council meeting, to have public input on whether or not they support this.
Just a clarification, it's not a formal public hearing, it's just public comment?
Comment, sorry.
Prior to council taking action on the naming?
On our next agenda.
That's correct.
So I'll wrap that up really quickly. There's also another piece, there's a financial piece, a fiscal impact, which is, there's an estimated cost of about $10,000 to have a plaque done, and that would, the city manager would see if that came from the contingency fund.
Contingency fund, yes.
So that is, that kind of boxed up nice and neat, and I would make a motion to solicit input from the public on naming the police headquarters located at 100 Court Plaza in memory of former police lieutenant Walter Robinson.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone wishing to comment on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have several people signed up to speak. The first is Reed Thompson.
I guess they've cut the sound off.
Yeah, you know, I want to come in here one night and have my video work.
Okay, hold on.
I offered to come in earlier today, and I would like to actually be able to make a comment.
If the volume in the bottom right is turned up, would that help as well? Not just on the video screen?
It's really funny, because it works at my house, it works just fine on my phone, but it doesn't work here. I feel like my speech is being stifled.
I am up as high as I can go on my video, as high as I can go.
I'm just talking.
Well, somebody's done something then. Somebody has done something to my video. This is the third time I've been in here to try to play a video, and nothing ever works for me when I'm here.
Hold on, Kathy's going to cut me out. There we go.
So then the city wouldn't be being transparent if something was being told verbally, and we can't, we can't actually put it in writing? I mean, so, I understand your, I understand your opponent in this, but what I'm asking upon is, is ask a question, because it's the government, it's the government that belongs to all of us, and if it belongs to all of us, where is the enablement of the election? Where is the cause of the judicial hearing that's went through to eliminate the upper? And that is the question of the problem.
I didn't intend to, this is very clear, the buffer is designed to provide some breaking traditionally, noise, and light between two potential incompatible regions. In many instances, you use buffers for just that purpose, to soften the edges between uses that might otherwise be incompatible. The fixing, trucks, and operation is within the buffer, that hardly meets that intent. But the staff can only enforce the requirements that are set out in the regulations. It goes back to what I was saying earlier, if you, if you think, well, just apply this to the common sense of having workers out amongst legal folks who come to some amicable solution, that is not unlargely the staff has, the staff has to apply the regulations as newly elected officials have written, and if you allow them to secure all the compliance in the public.
Okay, the next person I have signed up to speak is Todd Stimson. Stinson. Stinson. So I said Stimpson. I did Stimson.
Hello, council members, it's been a while since I've seen you. Hello to the new ones, you may not know who I am, I'm an activist that puts my well-being on the line for other people, constituents and citizens.
Todd, pull that mic up, there you go, yeah, that's good.
And what I'm here for, I'm happy to hear the proclamation for the hemp history week, and all the benefits that you mentioned from the hemp. I didn't really hear much of it as far as the medicinal aspect, but there is a strike, pretty much, I say assault, on that proclamation by the SBI agency in the state. They're trying to do a ban on smokable flower. You talk about craft, Asheville has crafted hemp into its society through many businesses, through many farmers, through many citizens. Lots have received many benefits from it, and I want them to continue to receive the benefits from it, and not be going back in time and creating a prohibition on something, and creating criminals out of individuals that are not criminals. These people, if the ban goes in effect on smokable flower, can be charged with a controlled substance, and with many of them, they have pounds of hemp. When it comes to pounds, it comes to minimum mandatory sentences. People will be sent away from their families, from their businesses, and their lives can be destroyed. We want immediate response to this, and I look to you guys, because your voice is important. When you did the resolution in support of medical cannabis, it started to affect across the state. People were inspired by it. I even got the Buncombe County Commission to support it, in a letter of support. And then another city, which is very conservative, it took me almost a year to get a letter of support from them, but even one of the persons changed their mind. So people that were on the other side of the aisle have actually come to the middle of the aisle. To see in Raleigh, the resolution and the letters of support, it made people's voices actually being heard, because it was an official document, not just a regular email from an individual. So as an official document, which comes from the SBI, I feel it is very important that we need a letter of support for the businesses, for the farmers, and for the citizens and constituents, which could be fairly simple and fairly easy, letter of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then, next person I have signed up to speak is Brad Bruce.
Rouse.
Rouse, I'm sorry. Okay. And Velvet Hawthorne.
Good evening, my name's Velvet Hawthorne. I live at 17 Maxwell Street, and I've been here in the past as a...
Can we turn it on?
Okay. This was my 2016 Honda CRV parked in front of my house. As you all know, last July, it was hit by a tractor trailer coming up Marcella Street, because for some reason, he felt that was the way to get into the parking lot to deliver, and he couldn't make the turn. The turn is impossible to make with a truck with a double sleeper cab in the back. So he jockeyed back and forth until he grabbed the back of my car and dragged it up the street and created $6,000 worth of damage. I was without my car for 30 days. And recently, I'm going to show you, I also lost a tree in my front yard, I don't know if you can, you probably won't be able to see this, most likely, yeah. Yeah, maybe you can. That was a very large tree on the corner of my lot. Multiple trucks over the nine years I've owned my home have hit limb after limb, knocked limbs off. One time, a limb fell on top of the truck, and the guy had to climb up on top of the truck and pull the limb off. My tree was basically dead by the time, in the nine years. So last year, I paid $800 to have the tree taken down, even though the city, I called the city arborist, even though the tree is on the corner, and it's pretty much on city property almost, they refused to help me take care of the tree. This is Brian Turner. He owns the property where these trucks are delivering the products, and for some reason, he was allowed to have this loading dock permitted, even though it shouldn't have been done. It was against the code in the city. And recently, we have a parking lot here, which also, I don't know how that was permitted, there is a parking lot for Whole Foods right here. My house is right here. We've yet to see any hearing or why that parking lot was even allowed, but there's a lot of runoff there. It's a stone dirt parking lot. My main concern is, you know, we've been battling, Mr. Thompson's been battling for a long time, about the quality of life of where we live, and the issues that we're having there. And since we've spoken in these meetings, and I know you've all seen this map, this map was basically from April of 2018, and then you look at this map, and you'll see that Mr. Thompson's and my property have been changed from a mixed use to now just residential. I feel that this is retaliatory, and we feel that it's wrong, and we feel that the city council should be doing something about this. Thank you.
Thank you. The final person I have signed up to speak is Joe Minicozy. If you didn't sign up to speak, you still can have a chance to speak.
Mayor, council, my name's Joe Minicozy, I'm an AICP certified planner, and I'm just going to put a couple of items into the record. Today, you moved on putting a lien on Mr. Thompson's property, which I find reprehensible. This is an email that we've pulled from the public record of Mr. O'Kla Chaney having correspondence with Shannon Tuck reviewing some of my testimony and what I've been asking in support of the document. What I find frustrating about this is, about eight months ago, I had Todd remove Shannon from this case because of the obvious conflict of interest in her involvement with this, yet she's still involved, but she shouldn't be. That is an ethical violation. The law that Mr. O'Kla Chaney has put forward clearly states that there should be no trucks, particularly gross-weight vehicles over the 10,000-pound limit. Yet, he cites that grease trucks can be allowed on the street, and grease trucks can't fit in the site, they block the sidewalk. This happens every Friday. If you want to have fun, just go out there on a Friday and just take some pictures. There's this handy-dandy little chart that I gave your staff, that clearly lists the garbage trucks that are private service, the Budweiser trucks, all this stuff is over the 10,000-pound limit, including the grease trucks right there. So why do these trucks not receive a notice of violation, for their violation of the law? So Mr. O'Kla Chaney has been authorized to enforce these laws and send out a notice of violation. This is clear in our laws of what's allowed to do. Any person that violates the laws should be given a notice of violation. This is not only a city charter, this is also an NCGS statute that they should be following. This is our laws. Sorry? I need some fingernails or something. So Todd has given the authority to send out, to authorize to enforce this, and you have to send out a notice of violation. It doesn't say maybe, it says you shall notify the person. You have to send out a notice of violation, period. This hasn't happened in the 15 years. I have Robin Curran says that a notice of violation goes out, so she clearly sees this. Gwen, you've written an email saying a notice of violation should be issued. And Julie, you talk about having some, something to put over green light. Why put anything over them? Send them a damn notice of violation and get on with it. They should be following the law. So also, Vijay, you stepped in with this email, saying that, hey, council shouldn't be doing this, this is the city manager's responsibility, which is indeed true. I support the city manager to enforce the rules. You all shouldn't be getting involved with this. Yet, time and time again, we see emails, and Esther, you're in on this as well, with involvement, yet, when the hearing came due for Mr. Thompson, you actually recused yourself from the hearing. So how can you recuse yourself from a public hearing, yet be involved in meetings and conversations? Any person that meddles with the law, that doesn't allow the city employee to enforce the law, is guilty of a misdemeanor, according to the state.
Three minutes are up. Okay. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, who didn't get to speak, and is not speaking on something that was already on our agenda, this is your opportunity, yes.
My name is Lowell Sopchek. I was born and raised in Asheville, and I'm currently a graduate student at Columbia University in the city of New York. I'm speaking to you all today about the serious concerns I and many other Asheville residents have about the rollout of 5G, and why 5G must be stopped and must not be allowed in Asheville. Around 240 scientists and doctors from 42 countries have signed the 5G appeal, submitted to the EU in 2017, urging a moratorium on the rollout of 5G. 5G is not like previous generations of cellular technologies, which use lower-frequency waves. 5G uses high-frequency millimeter, millimeter waves, the type that the US military uses for weapons such as crowd control. The telecommunications industry wants to put 5G small cells all over neighborhoods in America, forcing humans to be subjected to mandatory radiation 24/7, 365 days a year for the rest of their lives. This is, this is an assault on humanity, on human rights. I, a young woman, deserve to have the choice to live a life free of radiation. I should be able to decide what my body is subjected to. It is a huge violation of human rights to force everyone on the planet to be subjected to inescapable microwaves without their consent. I do not consent to 5G. I do not consent to be a human experiment, which is what this 5G rollout is. At a Senate Commerce, Science, and Transportation Committee hearing in February, Senator Blumenthal of Connecticut asked telecom industry representatives if there have been any studies about health risks from 5G, and they admitted that there are not and have never been any studies on it. The International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, adopted by the United Nations in 1966, states in Article 7 that, quote, "No one shall be subjected without his free consent to medical or scientific experimentation," end quote. This international law is being violated with the rollout of 5G. Thousands of peer-reviewed scientific studies have shown that millimeter waves of the type used by 5G increase the risk for cancer, congestive heart failure, destroy eye and skin cells, damage DNA, increase the risk of diabetes, cause neurological damage, and many other health risks. I am truly worried that I will not have a future if this is going to be allowed to happen. The major news media have not been honest about the serious health risks of 5G. Why? The telecom industry controls much of the major media. AT&amp;T owns CNN, and the New York Times has a partnership with Verizon. The American Cancer Society, which the FCC cites, is funded by the telecom industry. The telecom industry does not care about my health, nor do they care about you or your children's health. They only care about profits. Please, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, protect your citizens from 5G. Listen to what scientists and doctors are telling us about the dangers of this technology. Tell the government of North Carolina that you will not subject your citizens to this dangerous technology. I, as a young person with a whole life ahead of me, am counting on you to protect me. Please stop 5G.
Thank you.
Ma'am, would you be so kind to leave your comments? I would love to see them if you'd like to, if you'd like to leave them.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Yes.
I have an idea that I would share. In 2017 and 2018, as we, in the community, were about to come and advocate for you at the budget hearing, I requested that the room might be considered too small. And I heard that again tonight, as people went into a first overflow room and then a second overflow room. I was in the first overflow room, and we couldn't hear the meeting that was happening. And I think that we have an opportunity to move it into a bigger room, to think about what other cities do about partnering on childcare, to have at least Spanish language, if not Russian, translation services. And when we're in a bigger room, even if we are, like, of strong polar disagreements about the conversation that's had, at least we could be together while that conversation is had, which I think would help us think more holistically about the decisions that are made. And I think that it would be a great benefit to our elected officials as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. If not, we are adjourned.